Are we on YouTube?
Yes.
Are we live yet?
Yes.
This meeting of the Rich Lands Town Council comes to order. Please stand to the invitation. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity to be together in this budget workshop to discuss the budget and to carry on all the business of Rich Lands that we can. Thank you for the blessings of the day and the beauty of the day. We appreciate it in the spring and the good walk ahead this afternoon. And thank you for everything. Right through your blessings along with us today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may proceed. Welcome everyone to this meeting for the council. Our agenda is before us, Town Council Budget Workshop, this evening, April 27, 6:00 p.m. We've had the call to order. We have an invitation and the Pledge of Allegiance. We're now ready for our budget workshop. And does everyone have the appropriate papers before them of the proposed budget?
Yes.
John, is there anything you need to give us before? Are you ready?
No, you should have everything.
Okay. Would you like to proceed with the budget?
Yeah. It's okay if you all kind of go through, give you a brief summary of what's changed from the last budget you got, and then after we get to the end, we can go back. And if you want to mark any of your questions on as we go through it, and we can go back and just go through each question and try to answer those and discuss those. We'll start with the broad overview. In your agenda packet, you should have gotten a copy of the budget schedule. This is our first budget workshop. If we would like to have another one, we will need to schedule that at the end of this meeting, so we can have everybody on the same page of what we need to do. If we're unable to get a kind of a consensus on what we plan to do at the May meeting, meeting for the first reading, then the May second meeting for the approval. The next item you have in your package is the memo. Essentially, this is the memo you already received on the budget.
Was originally submitted. There are a few changes in red that was, that are based on what decisions or direction the council gave at the last meeting that we held. All right.
John, make sure I'm on the right page. Memo.
That was the memo. And now we're going to head to the first stapled packet.
Okay, that we got previously.
Should be stapled in your packet.
Yeah, stapled in your packet. It was just an updated version of what you'd received.
I don't think I got it.
You didn't get this?
It was delivered by the police. I picked this one up on the front door, the front door.
You didn't get one of these in your folder?
I didn't get it. This is what I had last time. That's all I got.
You didn't get one yesterday?
Yes, sir. So if you don't mind, supply that. I'd appreciate it. Thank you. It's just an oversight. No big deal. Okay.
It's online and on the website. I don't have any.
Do you have a hard copy? Can we make a hard copy for anybody who wants one? As a matter of convenience. It's not a real big deal.
I can, I can steal the attorney's.
Okay. I'm sure they appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm sorry I missed this. I don't know how I did, but it's okay.
It's to be done in there. Oh, so you didn't get a folder at all?
You didn't get a folder at all.
Oh.
Thank you. Well, this is what I just got, Jeff. I haven't gotten it. It's okay.
That's all the copies I got, so.
That's all right.
For now, but yeah. I thought you received it.
Yeah, I didn't get it. That's okay. I can, I can work from this. Thank you.
All right. So are you good on the first? Do you want me to go back through those?
If you don't mind, start getting them because I have not seen this.
Okay. The first page is just the agenda for tonight.
Yeah, I picked this one up out front, so I know how I got it. Okay? Thank you.
The second page is the, kind of our budget schedule with the updated, to include tonight's budget work session.
Okay.
If we need additional work sessions before our May, I believe, 10th meeting. I'd like to schedule those tonight, based on the outcome of this meeting. And then we'll have the meeting, I believe, on May 10th, and then the 24th for the first reading, and then the second reading and approval of the budget, is what the current schedule is for the budget process.
Okay, so what's on here is May 27, April 27. It's got a red check mark on it. I got that. Additional budget workshops as needed and currently scheduled.
Correct.
Because I'm just reading it and I have to catch up. May 10th, public hearing at 5:30, which we talked about. May 10th, regular meeting, first reading. May 24th, a regular meeting, second reading, adopt the budget, top rate and budget ordinances. Okay. Thank you. I'm good.
And then the next page is the memo that you received with the original budget proposal. I notated the changes based on the direction of the last council meeting, which essentially was the personal property tax and real estate tax. The council, at that time, did not want to pursue further discussion on.
It's at the bottom, number four?
I believe it's in red.
Yes, okay. Okay, I'm turning, John.
I don't remember what's on the back.
Well, there's some red lines here, summary, proposed revenue.
Essentially, that was the same thing that was just spelled out on the first page, just showing the total of what was changed as of that direction council gave.
Okay. Okay, I see it now. Okay, thank you.
All right. If everybody's good, we'll move to the general fund. It's probably the thickest one you have, starts with the council.
The original one? The one I just pulled out of the bag?
Yeah, the one you just got.
Okay.
Should have yellow highlights.
I see.
Excuse me. Okay. So this reflects the $25,000 cut to legal fees. That's something that was brought up that when we discussed with our attorney, we felt that, you know, we could cut and still be within budget. When we originally did our projections, we looked at probably the first month or two they worked for us, and because they had so much catching up to do, there was a lot more billing. The one we went back, we feel comfortable with that cut at this time, and then that was, you know, what was discussed at our last council meeting. The next item highlighted in yellow was where the council health insurance is. At this point, we have no members of council that have, you know, joined into that, so that will be zero for this current year's, or this coming year's budget.
Okay. Could we, well, we can't do it in this meeting, we have to regular meeting. Could we do away with that? This for discussion.
Okay, I got you.
Discussion. We're not, go ahead. I'm sorry, you're fine. Go ahead, I can hear you.
And that's all I really need to highlight on that page.
Let me just follow it. I'm sorry. Let's get something to kind of go with here. Okay, I got it.
All right.
Are we going to ask questions per page, or how are we going to?
I'll leave that up. Either we can do questions per page, or we can go through the whole thing and then go back and anything that people had questions about.
Here's a suggestion, Doug, but, you know, I'll suggest from the mayor's point of view. Probably if we go through it and make notes as we go of what you would like to talk about, then things at which there's no discussion, we can solve that. And then with this discussion, if, if count of you and the rest of council are amenable to that idea, that might be something to do, to make a note of what you want to talk about. Members of council?
It's fine, man.
Your thinking?
That's fine. Whatever works.
Just note what you want to ask about, or any of the members of council. Thank you.
The next page is the finance budget. We didn't have any changes to that. It should be the same as what you received in your prior, prior agenda packets.
This is the same?
Yes, as well as the non-departmental, the next page is the same. There's no changes to those. Then in the IT department, one of the things we discussed at our last meeting was essentially using some funds to pay off some debt that we have earlier, so then we don't have those payments in this year's budget, therefore being able to reduce our necessary expenditures for those departments. One of the main departments we even had, we don't have a whole lot of debt through the whole town, but the main things we had were in the IT department, our servers, and some of those items of that nature. So as of right now, we have budgeted to go ahead and pay those off, and we have a new server that we're going to have to purchase, go ahead and purchasing that outright, so then we don't have another debt payment. And essentially, this will free up revenue for other needs. And I'll, and I'll.
Just a quick question, and it's not an in-depth question. Is this the same as the first piece of legislation or not, a budget I pulled out, or is this a change?
No, this is, the yellow is different.
The change, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really going to try to highlight anything that's different.
Okay, so anything in yellow is different from the other?
And specifically, those were items that we kind of discussed at the last council meeting.
Okay. Okay.
Community development, there are no changes, as well as miscellaneous, there were no changes. In the police department, you'll see in yellow, it was originally 100, it was originally 45,000, and we bumped that up to 144. This is essentially, instead of financing the tasers and the body one cameras that we were planning on spending, I think $35,000 every year for the next four years, we've already budgeted the first payment this year, paying that off, so it would free up that $35,000 in revenue for next year's budget. All right. The fire department, there were no changes. Rescue department, I don't believe there are any changes. If there were changes, they were minor, nothing that is major enough to highlight. I'm sure there were some small changes in some of these on salaries or things of that nature when we were looking at trying to make sure we got the budget balanced.
Rescue?
Yes.
Okay.
Street, nothing in particular I need to highlight. Sanitation as well. Recreation, no major changes. On community and civic facilities and donations, and the original budget you received, our summary didn't include the donations part, so essentially we were $10,000 negative. That issue has been addressed in this budget you have. So essentially, we just didn't count it into our expenditures, but with the new figures we have adjusted for that, so it is more reflective of what the accurate accounting should be.
This is on community? Which one are you on?
Community and civic facility.
Okay, I've got it.
The donations, the 40, 40, 70, that 10,200 was inadvertently left off the total for the budget to be break even, so we've added that back incorrectly and addressed that issue. Capital, really, we only have two items. One is the computer equipment that was mentioned earlier in the IT, and then we have a command vehicle for the fire department, and I believe it's a dump truck for the street, yeah, street department. We've essentially already ordered that dump truck, but with the current lead times on vehicles, and we don't anticipate getting that until next year's budget, so we budget it now, even though we've already ordered it.
John, just a quick question, bring me up to speed. Which, it's under what, fire, did you say?
Yes.
5415 Fire.
5415.
Capital dash Fire.
Okay.
Three rows down.
Okay, so it's 64?
Hundred, 64, whatever, no, 640,000.
Yeah, I got you, Jeff. Vehicles, boats, et cetera, is that which one you were talking about? Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, I got it. Thank you.
All right. Everybody's good on capital. The next page is essentially a summary, so it pulls in all the revenues that we'll talk about in a little bit for the general fund, and then it shows all the departments and what is budgeted for those. And then we discussed at the last meeting, potential tax increase for the additional 2% COLA. I had members of council reach out to me and said, you know, ask if there was something we could do to try to, you do that additional raise for our employees, so we were able to put that in there. To do that, we had to take a little bit of a risk, but we're seeing quite a bit of turnover in our different departments, and we think that, you know, that lag of a month or two before you're able to replace an employee, there will be some savings with salaries, and so that's where that $38,000 comes in there that's highlighted, is employee turnover that we're kind of hedging, that we will have. The current budget has, if we're fully staffed, 100% of the time, which, as you all know, that's not completely realistic, so we're trying to hedge against, you know, that to, hopefully, you know, not budget money that won't be spent, and then we have it to keep the balance, the budget balanced. You'll see in water, wastewater, they are break even with the increases, and then electric revenue, based on the presentation GDS gave at our last meeting, that we're projected to be about $65,000 in the hole, but that's in an effort to not do any electric rate increases.
Following, thank you.
All right, we'll go to the next page. I have the 44340 Water Treatment Plant. This first handout was your general fund. This is your utilities, so it'd be water, sewer, and electric, as well as line maintenance. Really, there's not any major changes to these from what was originally proposed, except the electric department, because we, based on council direction and GDS's presentation, the decision to essentially cut two positions. This is one of the linemen that we had opening, so when Kevin left, we lost the electrical engineer. We had an employee kind of slide over and start handling some of his job duties, but when he slid over, we never replaced him from the line crew. So essentially, the electric department is down to employees and to, you know, cut their budget in a way that we thought we could get as close to not having to do an increase. That's one of the things we did to make that happen. So that's reflected on here in yellow. And then we had.
On, in the outline?
Yeah, it's on, I think it's the fourth page on mine.
Okay. Sure I get it, okay?
Yeah. And then the other, only other thing highlighted is the changes in cost, and then the pilot expenditure that we discussed cutting in at our last council meeting.
I got it.
If everybody's good, that is all the expenditures. The last one is your revenues. It should be a lot in red. I know it's sometimes hard to see, but the way we do the accounting is revenues are negative and expenditures are positive, so when you see all these, these are negative. I will highlight a few of the things in yellow. Most of them have been mentioned already. On the first page, we have the $200,000 that was cut, the pilot, transfer from electric to general fund, and then we, in there, we have, as I mentioned earlier, we had some debt and some other things we wanted to pay off. So when I spoke to our auditor, to use ARPA money and meet all the requirements we need, he recommended we allocate funds for salaries, and then the surplus we would have after allocating that funding could be used as, you know, free money with any, without any restrictions. If we use just ARPA money for certain things, there's additional requirements that, you know, procurement or other federal requirements. So their recommendation was to use some of that ARPA money for salaries, and then any additional revenue we had could be used for, you know, those things like the debt and things of that nature. So it's a little confusing, but I hope I explained it as simply as I could.
Same pot, just different way.
Yeah. Yeah. Then, if you go down, and a small, on personal property, I was planning on leaving that as kind of neutral from what we had originally budgeted. I spoke to the county treasurer, and they project a increase in the assessment of vehicles. As you know, it's become more and more difficult to find vehicles and purchase them, so the value of used vehicles has gone up over the last few years, so they anticipate that, you know, assessment to be increased, so therefore our revenue would increase as well. They are expecting about a 22% increase. I wanted to stay a little bit lower on that because we've just started personal property, so I did an additional 20% to make sure our balance, our budget balanced at this time, and, you know, hopefully we do come in at 22%, but, you know, with people just learning personal property in our collection, it's going to take us a year or two to get really that in, you know, full circle and full cycle going. And then the next item is a increase to 25 cent on the cigarette tax that was mentioned at the last meeting. And then the last item on this for revenue is a increase in the garbage collection of, I believe, 6.72%. I believe it equals about 80 cent per month for our residential, and the commercial would be, based on that percentage of increase.
80 cent per month?
It makes it 13.50 a month, and it's 12.60, I'm not sure the exact, but it's right around Eighties, 82, 83. 12.65. I just pulled them on. All right. And that's the only thing that I needed to highlight on this page.
I'm, I'm following. I just haven't turned to the, oh, what I had.
Oh.
Time to go back and forth, thank you.
For the next two, so for water and sewer, really, there were no changes. As we've discussed, there are proposed increases that we have in place to help us with the water and wastewater plant upgrades. Essentially, as you know, we went and got financing for that for low interest, as well as grant funding, and to be eligible for that grant funding, we had to increase our rates. As I understand, essentially, it was, they were saying, you're not doing enough, charged enough to help yourself when you need repairs, so why should they, you give us the assistance? So not only did we go up on our rates, so then we are bringing in enough revenue to do our own repairs and maintenance, but also, you know, they wanted us to build our reserves, so then if something were to happen, we would have those reserves built up to make sure we made that payment. So those increases have been built in here. I anticipate having our rates kind of reassessed maybe mid next year by the person that did our rate study, so we can see, you know, are we bringing in enough revenue, are our reserves being built the way they need to be, so we make sure that at the end of year three, we're exactly where we need to be, so that we don't have any issues with closing those loans out. All right. And then the last page is essentially just the electric fund. Originally, we had an increase in there based on GDS's projections from last year. As you know, they presented at our last meeting, and they feel that, you know, if we cut everything we've proposed, and we really, you know, take a little bit of risk that we can not do any increases for next calendar year.
So the yellow, I see the change here, basically, we have, and then parts in yellow, right?
Correct.
Okay. Is that the overview, John?
That's essentially the overview, so we can go through it. If there's any questions, if you want to start, maybe at the very front, if you go through.
I think that's fine. Let me get myself in order here. I think this is the new, before we go forward, members of council and ladies and gentlemen, I need to take care of a little housekeeping duty, and that is to welcome our new member of council, Seth, welcome. We're glad you're here, and I hope you find this to be something that will be helpful to all of our citizens. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Smelled pretty good.
What?
Is that on the record or off the record?
I couldn't hear that. Smelled something.
It smells good.
Okay. We're good. Okay, we're fine. Well, let's, John, I think we should, at the point, we could entertain questions, and in order to try to keep this not necessarily brief, but as focused as we can, we probably should take it in the order that we're looking at it right here. Make sure I have the correct one. Is this the latest addition? I've got four things up here, John, what I brought. John?
The most recent one should have yellow.
I think there's this one, and then there's this one. Hold on. I'm going to pick what we don't need. This is the one. Let's move what I don't want. This is the new one.
Yes.
Okay. Let's get this out. This is fine. I'm sorry for the confusion, but I didn't have the material, so I really, that's all I can say.
We'll get you. That's good.
So here we are. The floor is open for discussion. Who has a question? Let's just take it the foot line. Thank you for your help, Jeff. Council, any questions here? There's been a change, 65,000, cut 25, and zero, cut 70, 20. That's, looks like, Town Attorney, we cut that as the proposed, recommended anyway, and then we have insurance, health insurance, 70, $7,020. Any questions there?
On the attorney, we jumped from 46,000 to 65,000. That's a pretty good jump for me. I can't see in one year you go up almost 20,000. I can't see in one year, you go up almost 20,000. And we could have, you know, I just think that's a large jump for me. And we've got less citizens, less, I guess, when we hard them, I want to put a cap on it. I think we'd been paying like 40, 4.4,500 a month. And now we've jumped up from that, 40, from 40, we went from 40 to 46, now we're 65. I mean, I just think that's high. I think 50 would be plenty enough for an attorney. Most attorneys, on the average, gosh, that was two, three years ago, 89,000 a year, 100, I mean, your average attorney. That's a part-time, we're giving 65,000. To me, that's awful high. That's just my thinking.
Well, I have another question about that.
Okay.
Just so I understand, so the town attorney, they still trial the cases too? They do, is that part of what they do as well? Like, do you speed tickets or whatever, don't they get out there and do that at town?
That's changed.
That's changed, no.
John, are you able to explain that, say, Seth?
I'm not sure.
I don't know if he was here.
He may not have been. Because that's not...
I know what you're talking about, but that's not...
Heather, can you enlighten us?
John wasn't here, I don't know what Seth's talking about.
I think the district attorney, it's something we discussed.
The district attorney, I think.
Handles those. And we pay a flat fee or something.
Mr. Blaster.
Okay. So a question, you know, and I understand what Doug said too, but when, on Board of Supervisors, I think we, at one point, we employed two attorneys, and they're all, I believe that's still the case, I guess, because Eric's minister.
Yeah.
Yes. But we hired the second attorney for around about 65,000. I don't know, we can look that up to see what the total is. But, you know, if you start, if we continue to go down that path, it might be a good opportunity to, you know, hire a full-time attorney.
In-house.
In-house. Because you're getting to that place where you're almost at the place where it's going to cost you as much. And then if you have that, you're not getting any extra billables, you know, they're learning, and there's a lot, you know, when these guys come out of law school, you're not going to get somebody with a ton of experience for 65,000. But get somebody who wants to learn, and, you know, that you're using them full-time, and there's not extra billables, and maybe some other things that they could do, maybe some other places to save money of having them do some extra duties in the town as well.
I think that's certainly something that should be considered. And I remember, we batted the idea around, but didn't, didn't do that. Because, as you know, we've had several attorneys. And so when we employed the services of Bob Altizer and firm, we needed their services, and we hired them, we all did what we did. But that doesn't mean that they're not doing a good job. Obviously, what it does mean is that it's something we should consider. I don't disagree with that. I don't know how to approach that at this current time. I will open, there, I'm welcome to, I think we should be welcoming suggestions of how to consider such a thought, and because we have a lot of work to do. And I imagine that several of us have needs for the council, for an attorney. I know John does, as the town manager, not for our personal reasons, but for town reasons. And that might be an approach, that we would hire them on a salary, so we know what it is.
There's a lot of things that you can get done quicker. You know, they can handle a lot more things in-house if you're drafting agreements, you know, different things. It's just something we can look into and see what...
I think it should be a consideration.
But if you're approaching that much cost, it might be beneficial to have someone that we have full-time outside.
Who's here at the town hall?
Yes.
I think that's not a bad suggestion at all. I don't know how to go forward with it right at this point, but I definitely think it's a point for consideration, other members of council.
Could I say, I think it's a great idea, but for the upcoming budget, until we find a full-time, why can't we put out bids? I'm sure, like the Goose Attorney, I'm sure they will do it for 40, for, they'll do it 4,000 a month, 4.5, instead of paying 65,000 a year, and we could save 20,000 there. At least put out bids for a town attorney. We don't have to automatically hire the group that we have now for the new budget. So why don't we put out?
Isn't that something that has to be bid, your professional services?
Generally, we have done that. Where I would think of this, and I might be wrong, as a continuing contract. I'm opening it up for thought. But there's no contract that can't be altered or changed. I think we need to consider where we are right now and our need for legal services, and where we want to be in our, for our legal services.
Why can't we put out in the paper for, you know, bids on an attorney for the town? We've got time before the new budget.
I think we'd have to fire the one we have before we can...
We can't just do that.
Yeah, I think there, that's what I'm saying, the need for legal services right now. We would need to look at, Doug, I don't disagree that we need to watch our expenses. What I'm trying to say, I think we'd have to research what we're doing with them legally. I mean, they have, they deserve some consideration for what you're rendering.
But if we go on that premise, we would never get rid of them. There'd be never a good time to put out for people to apply. We'll get in the, we go on with the budget, then it'll be in the middle of the year. Someone, we can't do that to them. And when do you ever get rid of someone?
They're doing it, them are doing it.
We've gotten rid of a few of them over the last few years.
I mean...
We don't do anything, do we?
I cannot see, I mean, we've, we have a new budget. We hire them from year to year. I can't see why we can't put out in the paper that we're looking for a town attorney and have bids on it. It's a new budget. But I mean, it's...
Well, I think something like that, though, you need to interview to see if you want to do it outside just taking bids. I mean, you know, anybody could bid on it, but would they be worthy of representation or not?
If we have...
Because that's who we, I mean, we interviewed, what, three different, two, only two, wasn't it? There's two.
Did you sign a contract? I mean, is there like a, is like a one-year contract, a two-year?
It's a one...
I can't remember.
It's a one-year. It goes from year to year from budget. And if we get...
They just deal per hour.
If we need something that's a little bit more than they can handle, we always get somebody specializing in that.
But, Doug, let's do this. I'm not opposed to what you're saying, but...
I mean, you guys, you guys want to cut the budget. But you never do, because you, oh, we can't do that to this person, we can't do that. There's always an excuse why that you can't cut the budget. And those poor old people out there can't buy their groceries, their medicine, they're having a hard time, and we're sitting here worried about somebody's feelings.
I got them when we characterize that way. I don't appreciate it.
Well, that's the way it is.
Let's move on, please. Say, thank you, Seth, for your suggestions. Thank you for your comments. Let's move on. I think we should take that up in a regular session of council.
I have one question about the council, this one here, the one that we're on.
Okay.
John, the Davenport work, is that coming out of the special studies? Is that, is that where we're thinking that's coming out of, or is that coming out of some other?
It'll depend on if we end up paying them in this year's budget or next year's. If it's this year's, I think we're going to take it out of the special studies, because, you know, we wanted to do the zoning update. And the bid came in so much higher than what we had budgeted, that we kind of, you know, put it to the side. But if you, they don't really get started, because I don't want to pre, I don't like prepaying for a service like that.
Sure.
So it'll depend on, you know, kind of when they get, you know, most of the reports and the presentables you completed. But if you're not, it'll come out of that line.
Okay. So that's, okay. I follow your question.
Which, what was that, which line?
Special studies.
It's special studies, Doug. It's from the bottom, it's one, two, three rows up.
And what are you saying it's for?
It's for our special studies. It's for any studies that we want to have done. Last meeting, we had Davenport give us proposal, and that's where the, that's where that's going to come out of for the...
We originally, I think, designated the planning commission.
Yeah, so for this current year, not the one that we're talking about for next year, we had $30,000 in there for the zoning update. Those bids came in.
Let's clarify that, I hope, if you don't mind. I might be wrong. Zoning update is hiring a firm to help us professionally understand the zoning of the town.
We were wanting to hire till we...
Yeah. Well, until we got the bid, but only, did you ever send out another bid?
No, we, it's something we kind of, you know, it wasn't a top priority.
We'll talk about that later.
We may have. But essentially that...
I just want to clarify what we're saying here. Zoning update, we're talking about a different thing. Go ahead, John.
No, essentially, that money's there now, because it wasn't spent on that zoning.
So we're going to use that money potentially for Davenport?
If not, that Davenport charge will be credited to that line.
Okay.
In next, in next year's budget.
I follow you. Okay. I just wanted to clarify about the zoning update. Thank you.
So what's a Davenport study? Davenport is, Davenport, we need to, can we get him a copy of what Davenport gave us?
Yeah.
Okay, so they come back, it's a company, yeah, it's the company that Eric worked with to do their auditing and figure out what their problems were, and finance advisors from this guy.
I'm ready for John.
I'm good.
Next page, next page. I think we're over here where it says finance. Is that correct?
Correct.
Any questions on finance? I see no changes.
What about card processing? I didn't think you guys took credit cards now.
Well, anytime it's like, anything over, I think it's $400, like a well type, we don't take them unless it's, it's something that wouldn't be paid through the online You know, like for a well, or if like, you know, anything that's over $400, I think that you can use them for those. I think it's like $1,000 actually for those, like we'd put in a tab. That, which is, like I said, we brought those back and took them away several times. But the fees to process them in-house, now I've gotten well more than the $3 that they were charging.
What's...
Will this, will this company that we look at to this day, will it help?
Yeah, but they're still not going to be able to do, like, special things. Like, it'll take, they will take, you know, you would have to have an account number, obviously, an account to set that up. So if you're just putting, like, you know, putting in a well, a well tab, you're not going to be able to do that on there.
What's your estimation of how much you take in on credit cards a year?
Well, I mean, it's going to be way less than last year, because the only reason we took them last year is because we didn't have really anything in place.
Oh, just give me a, I mean, you must have a guess if you allotted $24,000 for charges.
Well, to put one well tab in, it's $1,000.
Well, I mean, but charges on the credit card processing fee, you would have to take in for that much, you'd have to take in 100 and some thousand dollars a month. Do you take in that much on credit cards?
No.
Oh, why is that so high? My company takes in... My company takes in 130,000 a month on credit cards, just one of them. We get charged maybe 2,000 a month. So we, ours, ours would run maybe 24,000 for the year, but we're taking way in over a million in credit cards.
51, 045.
There's also ACH fees in there. I don't know what ACH is.
I'd have to know before I vote for it.
51, 045.
Could that be 2,400?
So it could be cut?
Yeah, it could be cut.
All right.
Heather, what, are you trying to study it, Heather? I think you are.
Well, we, we've only taken about 12 in, looks like this year.
12,000?
Mm-hmm.
And you're projecting 24,000 in credit, I mean, you're, you're way off on that.
Well, that was based on six months through when we originally did this. You know, these numbers, you know, we're several months down since these originally came out, so we can adjust that.
Say you took in, you took in 12, that'd be, you'd be taking in 24,000 and paying credit cards, you'd be paying the whole thing for credit cards.
I think they just set the budget based on what the last six months...
Yeah, the last, so for, so for, through six months, we were at $9,700, and that's what we based it on.
But we used to take them...
Right, you were doing during the pandemic thing, right?
So that's something we can definitely cut.
Yeah, so that's the difference.
Are, are you saying the charges were 97, or you took in 97?
We, we'd taken in 97 through six months of this year.
9,700?
Yes.
In charges?
No, 97, and like fees.
In charges?
In fees.
In fees?
Fees.
Okay, so how much money would that be? I mean, if...
But, but remember, we didn't, you know, we didn't start not taking card payments until about three or four months ago. So the first six months of the year would have been at full, you know, people using their credit cards, you know, constantly. You know, now that we're not offering that, you know, that number's definitely dropped off. So we, we agree that we can definitely cut that line.
At that...
Then we can cut this 24,000.
Yeah, we can cut it. What would you feel?
If you're not going to take, that would be you took in like $80,000.
We had, we had a lot, we had so many credit card payments coming through that our auditors told us that we probably needed to look at it. Like, we had, we had more than most municipalities our size. And that's one of the reasons we started looking at, you know, the option to do it like PSA does, and not, you do as many credit card payments at town hall. Because we had such a huge amount of people using the credit cards.
Okay, Doug, this, I think they're trying to, I don't, I can't put words in the mouth. I don't know. Heather, are you trying to say this bears another look?
Yes.
Okay. So they'll look at that, Doug?
Okay.
Questions?
So you're looking, okay, good. I have another question. I shouldn't say this, but I'll say it. I asked the other time that we should put a freeze on hiring. I just want to bring one point on this budget. If you look at the finance office, we're spending 865,75689. Do you realize that you're spending almost as much as you spend on the roads, just for the finance office? If you look at your roads, people have holes in them, we have no pavement, the town's falling apart as far as the infrastructure, and you're spending almost the same amount on the finance, that's maybe 200,000 more on roads, but it's pretty close that you're spending the same thing on the finance office as you are on your road and infrastructure. To me, that's a problem. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, Doug. Noted. We'll go on, okay? Turning the page, says non-departmental. Finance Department. Next page says non-departmental, is what I'm reading. Is that correct, John?
Correct.
All right, so, members of council, any thoughts there? No concerns or thoughts there? Move on to the next page. What I'm seeing here, ladies and gentlemen, is IT Department 4060. I guess the ledger number, is that what it is, 104060? Okay. So we have, looks like, John, there's some changes here to recommended changes to the IT.
Yeah, these are, one of them is this new server that we have to replace. The, I believe it's the operating system is getting to a point where we can't get tech support on it. So we want to make sure we replace that before we get to a point where we're not able to get that service, if, you know, we do have an issue. And then the other item is some debt service we have, that we have two additional payments. I believe $80,000 that we'll be paying next year, and then the following year, that we'd like to go ahead and pay those off, so then we don't have that additional payment in the next two years.
So what would you project next year's, what would you project the next year's requested budget amount would be?
About the following year after this one?
Yeah, following year.
It would be-
Just press those.
303,000 minus, you know, 167-ish.
About half.
As long as nothing changes, you know, with technology or our needs over the-
So we're guessing, is that, I mean, that next year, we will not need as much?
The following year after this one.
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, the year of '23, '24.
Yes.
So you're saying salaries would be 12,500, so?
For this year.
For this coming year.
Okay. What's miscellaneous, 18,000?
Miscellaneous is 3,000. 18,000 is contract services.
Okay.
Or contract labor.
Okay, I got you. Yeah, you're right.
Any other questions here?
Is that 12,500, is that part-time or is that?
Part-time.
Part-time. Okay, what's the, okay, there's no insurance recommended, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So, what do you counsel, move on to the next page?
Where are the funds, so where are the funds coming from to pay off this? Are you using some of your, like COVID money or?
We're going to use the ARPA money to pay salaries and the funds that would be originally used for salaries will be used for that, so, and that's how the auditor recommended we do it on the accounting side.
I just want to make sure I understood, wasn't like, there's not 260 additional thousand from some other pool?
No.
It's from your-
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. All right, we'll turn the page, it looks that we're on community development?
And this is what we're calling economic development now. Community development is just what it's been called in our system for years, and eventually we hope to get that converted to what the intent of that department is now.
So, the 38,000, is that the person you're going to hire for?
I, I hope that we can hire somebody of that.
I talked to the county IDA and I hope, see if he's got experience with the county at this, but the county's got two people in their IDA, they, you know, got the director now, an assistant. And, and they're willing to do this work for the town.
Okay.
They will come in and anytime they can do anything Richlands, they would, they would be doing it anyway.
All right.
And I think, I think Doug mentioned not hard, and that's why I called and asked. Tim, if, if we needed one.
Okay.
And he said some towns didn't do it because the county had this covered.
Okay.
So I, I think that we could use them and save that money.
Okay, I have interviews for that position scheduled, so.
Well, I mean-
I like, you know, if that's, you know, if you feel that's the direction we need to go, I'd like to know, you know, seriously.
I mean, I hate you done that and then, you know, I didn't speak up at the last meeting because I wanted to know what I was talking about before I said it. What do you think, Sam?
I mean, the county has a good staff, I mean, they do a good job, but it's probably something you should have them, maybe you can ask them to come down the next meeting and we could ask them some questions, hey, if you're willing to do this, or, you know, what kind, what level of service are you going to provide, that kind of thing. But if they're telling you they're willing to do it, I think that it's definitely something that would, you know, even if we had to wait a few weeks to decide whether or not to hire someone, if they're willing to do it and we can talk to them about it, you know, we might be able to say, this is what we want to do, this is the direction we want to go, you know, what level of service would you be able to provide?
Yeah, that's a good idea, and then John could go ahead and do his interviews to have it in case we would decide to fill the position.
Just instead of making the decision, you know, hold up on the decision until we decide if that's the right way we're going to go.
To clarify, so I understand, thank you, Darryl, thank you, Sam. You contacted the county and they're, they're willing to share, or to put it however you want to put it.
The county or the IDA?
Do what?
The county or the IDA?
Well, it's the county IDA.
Okay.
Yeah.
They, explain that again, please, so I get it right.
They got two, they got two people, and the person that was with the town went to work for the county.
Ashley.
Ashley, and she will be, and that's going to be one of her main roles is helping the towns, if I understood Tim correctly. I don't want to put words into it, you know.
If that's the role, that makes sense, you know, and she's familiar with what is going on here, and if we can lean on the county's dime to pay for something that they're going to offer to do anyway, that makes sense.
And she's familiar, it's our Ashley?
Yeah, uh-huh, yeah.
That'd be great, she's familiar with the town already.
Yeah, that's for secrecy on that, I, I said in the interview on for her.
All right, so is the consensus to leave it in for now, and then in our next council meeting, May 10th?
Yeah.
We'll decide at that point.
We've got time to take it out, and I think Seth's got a good idea to ask them and see.
My only thing, I don't think it's a good idea to interview anyone until, you know, until-
When is your interview schedule?
This week.
This week.
I mean, my, my thing, first-
Yeah.
You're, you're wasting people's time, maybe, okay.
Exactly.
I mean, that's, that's just an idea to go ahead.
I mean-
If, that way if we did hire somebody, we'd have maybe somebody in mind, you know, but it's a-
The council hamstrung you.
Yeah, you got plenty of-
Just one way or the other, just tell me what to do, what you want me to do.
We get blown with everything else, might as well get blown with that.
Could you post it on it?
John, as the manager interviewing people, do you feel awkward interviewing people when you're not sure it's going to be funded?
Yeah, because I, I wouldn't, if I, I wouldn't want to interview for a job that I know the council's talking about cutting.
I'm not sure if I can pay you, Don.
Probably saying-
I think-
I'm like, I'm like-
I think that the best you can do is tell the truth, call these people and tell them, council is not sure this position is going to be funded, and at the appropriate time, you will call them back. That's all, you tell the truth, it just works.
I like Darryl's idea, blame the council. That'll work.
Okay. I hope that doesn't inconvenience you too much, but I think that's a pretty easy solution, just tell them the truth. Thank you. Okay, any others, I think that's a possibility. All right, any others discussion here on this page? Thank you. Okay, we're over to, looks like election. A ton of different things, fed, say, assets, police grants, narcotics, any questions on this page? I'll look at it myself, just on the page.
On the whole page, or?
Yeah, I'd say we can cover it, yes, this page. Looks that we have trying miscellaneous, elections, federal state asset, is that forfeiture, is that what that is? Police grants and narcotics task force, that's where I'm, what I'm looking at.
I think miscellaneous is awful high.
Where are you, Doug?
Allen Narcotics.
I don't think we really have a whole lot to say in that. They kind of have their own budget and it's funded by another organization, all we do is manage it. We don't tell them how to spend their money.
I went, I went over this with, that someone's involved in this, that they do the same thing, and they said this was padded a little bit.
It's-
Well, have you noticed that they've only spent?
I mean, we went from 50,000 to 94,000 in three years. Yeah. Oh, I know, but it's padded. I mean, I think I'd have brought it down if I only spent that much.
I think it's one of those, you know, it's not our money to, so, you know, whatever they-
I mean, you come up with figures, though.
They sent it to us.
Narcotics task force does, and we handle, what I'm understanding, I might not understand, they handle this, we take care of the money for them, but we-
We don't tell them how to spend it.
Oh, you didn't come up with any of these figures?
Is all this money funded from the asset forfeiture funds?
It's, it's- From the state or?
State or from the Georgia.
So this is not budget, this is not general budget money, this is all money from the state?
Yeah, earmarked for their, you know, work they do.
But I'm sure there's somebody in law enforcement that's overseeing that.
Yeah.
Any other questions on this page? Members of council? Thank you. John, we'll move on to the next page, members of council. Police department, does that do something in? Yellow down here, let's see.
This is similar to the IT, we've committed to purchase new tasers and body worn cameras for our officers, instead of spending $35,000 every year, the current, the budget proposed would pay that off in a lump sum.
This budget right here?
Correct.
Okay, and it says lost revenue funds, what, is that ARPA money?
Essentially, we're still using the ARPA money to pay for salaries, and then we'd have a surplus, and at that point, the surplus would be used for this.
I just, we, okay. Questions?
I don't, I don't know quite how to handle this, but if we transition to 911, it's going to save on this budget 300,000 to 400,000. So, pardon?
About 200,000.
It's much more than that. Salaries are like 200, you've got fees that you pay, you've got overtime that they get, dispatch that your officers get, so it's at least 3 to 4.
Based on our calculations, they're about 250 to 220, if you completely get rid of dispatch and have nobody at the PD in those positions.
Well, but even if that's 200,000, that's 200,000.
And that'll be something that this council, as you directed us to look into, in the decisions that we made.
I have a question regarding that, I think it might help, might not help. At our last meeting of the council, didn't we decide to have a group look at 911 and meet with various people? Did we? So how far are we with that? I don't know.
We met today and it, yeah.
Who met, who met today?
Jeff and I met with, with the sheriff today, and it looks very promising.
Did you include anybody from the town?
Pardon?
Did you include anyone from the town?
We are, the next meeting, I think we're going to include Jerry. We wanted to meet the first time with Brian, I mean, the sheriff, and it was very promising. And he thinks it would take about three months to transition over, and he's already working on it. I mean, you know, like the warrants and stuff, how much time it would take.
John, are you aware of this meeting?
I've just heard about it. I think Jeff, when I called Jeff today, he was in the meeting, so that's why, you know, that's how I found out, but I think it's a very difficult and very political decision that, you know, you know, we're going to have this conversation, this meeting, but it's going to, we're going to bring it back to this board and decide, because from what I see, it's how much coverage are you all wanting to have at the PD? Are you wanting 24 hours a day, somebody to be there to answer the door? You know, if we cut dispatch out, you know, there's not going to be somebody there. You know, so we have to kind of, you know, look and see what we're willing to trade, what trade-off is for saving the money, and then that'll be something this, you know, council as a whole needs to, you know, decide.
May I speak?
You may.
As far as someone at the door, they've already taken that into consideration, there'll be a phone, get someone there in a minute or two. As far as-
Are you going to guarantee that?
Yes, I'll guarantee that, two to three minutes.
You said one to two.
Well, let me ask you something. Why has every town in Virginia went away from 911, I mean, went away from dispatch? You know how many's left in Virginia? One. You know who it is? Richlands. Why is Richlands any special case than the whole state of Virginia? That makes no sense at all. Everyone else decided that they could not afford it, that they wanted to go to a more modern 911, but Richlands is special and it's going to hold on to, it's dispatch for ego and so forth, against the whole state of Virginia. That don't make sense to me.
As I've said, you know, dispatch is one component of it, but if you don't have those dispatchers there, you lose that person at the PD, so that's something that we'll have to discuss further.
Well, I think that's something that would help everybody, because I didn't know there was a meeting, whatever, is if the manager is, did you know this meeting was coming up? I don't know. If you're present, then you should be present as the manager, I think, and the members of council might or might not agree with me, but I think it's important that everybody be aware of what's going on at these kinds of meetings, nothing secretive, Jeff or Doug.
It wasn't secret, you asked, you asked us to meet.
I'm going to finish my statement. It's not, we had a consensus, we actually voted, I can't remember to have a committee formed, and I didn't know that two people were going to be on it. I thought it was involving more people, that's all I'm going for right there, and I've said-
Both of us were named.
Yeah, how many do we need, how many you think would be a sufficient number, I guess?
I mean, at the last meeting, Jeff decided to take it with me, our names were mentioned.
Okay, that's fine.
I just didn't know what, like I said, it's sort of new, so I-
I get it, too many people in a committee, you can't get anything done, but I'm just saying, if we know-
Oh, who would you, who would you like on?
I like you and Jeff.
Okay, who do you want to meet with this, I mean, I'm open-
I think, I think John and, I think Doug, Jeff, John and Jerry.
Okay.
Yeah, I met with, well, like I said, I, I met with Jerry and the town manager yesterday.
Before the meeting with the sheriff?
Yeah, so, yeah, so we did it sort of separate, and both of them sort of suggested-
Well, I'm only suggesting that everybody be informed of these things, so we all are on the same page and I don't know what's going on. And I'm embarrassed to say it, but I don't, Jeff.
Okay. You didn't even get a budget package, did you?
Why don't you be present too?
I would like to be, but I have to go to school, and that might not be convenient, but moving on.
Well-
It just like, nitpicking on my part, I don't mean that that way, but I think openness, what the Russians call glass nose, is very important. Thank you.
Well, from, from what we have gathered with our informative and I guess if you want to say casual discussions, if you want to call them a meeting, so, that's fine.
Just taking the words I heard.
That's right, that's right. I, I think, I think the next step, both, both parties, I, I was privy to both discussions, great points on both sides. Very encouraged by both sides, okay, and they suggested that we talk to the town of Bluefield that has just transitioned from their dispatch to 911, maybe see what they think, and maybe do that. I think that was sort of what I was thinking in my head would be the next step. And whoever would like to be invited to that meeting, certainly do, I don't know when or where, you know, who, who else wants to come or when to, and then maybe from that meeting, then we can move a step forward and meet with both sides, with the manager, whoever.
Well, I'm fine with whoever are meeting, I just think it's important that we know what's going on.
And we can let you know, and like I said, now, I don't guess, we can't have three though, right?
Not members of council?
I, I don't think we, we obviously don't, I just want, I'd rather, if I have to give a recommendation, I'd say let John schedule it, because these are John's employees that are directly affected and have opinions and, or should be entitled to those opinions, so.
Yeah, and, and like I said, I think it's, like I said, managerial decision too, as far as what direction council wants to take.
Bingo.
I did, I disagree. I mean, John's got so much to do. I mean, we should be able to schedule, the committee should be able to schedule the meetings and with those people present, make sure they're there, okay? I mean, if we rely on as busy as John is, we'll never get it done. I mean, this needs to be pushed and pushed hard, so we can get it done, so we can save the citizens money. You know?
He's the town manager. I completely disagree, he needs to be involved in everything that happens in this town.
Who was the, who was the group that we asked, that we were turn, we were told that couldn't do the study? What were their names that you were in?
It was EVA.
Weldon Cooper.
Weldon Cooper.
Oh, Weldon Cooper. What I would like to know, you're talking about openness, and I'm kind of, I don't understand, do you know who the only two people that were included in the discussions? None of the council were, but they were included on those emails. Do you guys have any idea who they were? I mean, this is the way this whole town works. One person and the town manager run everything. There were two people included in those emails, John O'Daniels and Mike Street. They got all the emails from Weldon Cooper. I mean, why does one council member work solely with the town manager? None of the other council are included. You're talking about openness.
I, I agree with that, we all need to be privy to everything.
Okay, everything that comes along, you'll see Mr. Street and- Okay, everything that comes along, you'll see Mr. Street and Mr. O'Daniels. You'll not see any more council working on it or any correspondence, including the budget.
That's not true.
Okay.
Okay, may I say something, gentlemen? My only suggestion was regarding meeting with the county over nine-one-one, and I, to be honest with you, I would like to have been a part of it, but I'm okay with it. So, it probably comes off as personal, my part, so forgive me for that, because that's what I'd like to have done. But that being said, we have to work in as expeditious a way as possible, and all of us can't be at everything all the time, but simply the fact of being informed, the manager could send out information, I think that's good. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and like I said, explaining myself further, I felt like I, being on, being appointed, I guess, to the committee, or I guess we could co-found the committee here, I wanted to get some information for myself, because
Right.
I'm ignorant on all of it.
As for-
Okay, a, a, as, as would anybody. That's not involved, so I was, I was, like, like I said, the last two days have been very informative for me. And that's, and, and now, now I have a direction which way I would like to see this procedure go. So, from that standpoint, that's why I was doing it.
Thank you.
Okay, and so now I think we need to go one more step, and then we can start getting some people involved as far as who needs to be into the decision. I, mainly our manager, who else? I mean, if there are other people who wanna be on committee, that's fine.
Well, as I said, I, I think this is something, we can go ahead here. I probably am the guy who got us off track about openness, but it is important. So, I'll take full responsibility for the sidetrack into the conversation, but it's an important piece. And thank you, Jeff, and thank you, Doug.
Yeah, and it's sort of the direction we took. I mean, I'm, you know, we weren't trying to hide anything.
Oh, no, I didn't take it that way. I just didn't know what was going on.
And at the, at the meeting, Mr. Mayor, both our names were mentioned for the committee, if you remember, because Mikey said, Jeff, would you like to do it? And Jeff said yes, and I, so we were both named to a committee.
Well, pardon me, I, I probably missed that. It's okay.
Mayor, one, one question about that. So, I know it's something we've talked about for many years. Dispatch has not been an issue that's come up recently. It's, you know, served on the board supervisors for eight years, and we've probably talked about it every single year.
Yes.
So, I know there's a couple of issues that has to be worked through with that. Do you guys have a timeline? Because if we're going to do this into this budget, we really need, the only reason I mention this, I feel like you need to go ahead and establish that tonight, that it's gonna be taken care of in this budget. It needs to, you guys need to have some direction. And the, as far as I understand from my many years of working through that, there, the big issues are, you may have the radio issues. We may have to purchase some new radios. So, you may save two fifty this year, but you really may not save, save it all in one year. Going forward, yes. But just, everyone, everybody understand, you may have to purchase some radios, and then you gotta decide whether or not you need some coverage. You may need one employee, you may not. I don't know the answer to that. That, those are all issues that have to be-
That's essentially what council, basically doing the background to get all the information like that, and so they have a, the full breadth of knowledge, so then a decision can be made.
Speaking, speaking to both, having spoken to both sides, the next step, what I felt like was to get, get those two sides together.
Yeah.
So, that they can discuss, because I think they're the most knowledgeable on both sides.
I will say, the report that I, and that, that I've gotten from the county is that, that the EMS dispatch has gone splendid, and that has been a real success with them, you know, taking all the nine-one-one calls, and I think all that's worked out very well. I spoke to Sheriff, some folks in his office, and they, they've been pleased with that. I'm assuming that they, they said they didn't have any negative reports from the town, or I don't think we've had any issues.
Both sides had encouraged us to talk to Bluefield.
Yeah.
I think that's the next step, so I was gonna try to-
Yeah, I was gonna say, maybe you guys need to set that up this week, and-
We, that's, that's on our schedule. Okay, so that's sort of the updating where we're at. So, then maybe from there, we can maybe get another meeting.
I just know that, you know, I know there's some things, and if we're planning a budget, and you're planning on having some savings, you need to know what, what's the real number, and I think that's where you're trying to get to.
So, Seth, you're saying, based on your experience, we're talking two hundred thousand dollars, so somewhere thereabouts, but it won't be that in the first year.
Well, I mean, I met with Seth. He did have some questions, and we went over all of that, and the radios and, and the, what was it, two?
It's two fifty, and then, but I don't know how much the radios are gonna cost, I'm assuming, and Jerry may be able to tell you that. I don't know.
And we did take into consideration insurance, VRS, FICA, I mean, you know, all the things that go along with having an employee. All of that things considered, it was more like that, and I mean, I'll be happy to share that with-
Well, and maybe, maybe what I was thinking, what I was thinking, once we can get through this, maybe you have a presentation at a council meeting, or do something. If we need, if we need to have a special call meeting or something to discuss this, then we can have all the information for everybody to-
And the sheriff has, they have to plan it on their end as well.
Exactly right. That's what he was saying today.
Yeah, exactly. So, I, I, when I, I did, we had a meeting at the PD today, and I did mention the sheriff. I was like, I understand this is, I'm hearing this from everybody. This is one of the things, it's like, have they talked to you about it? He said he was meeting with you guys, that, because I know they have to plan it on their end as well. Something that they've always been open to doing, but they need the research as well.
Thank you, and I think where this whole discussion lands is budget. Where we're gonna have, we're gonna deal with the budget, so here's a suggestion.
Oh, can I say one thing before we do that?
Just a minute, please. I'm not finished. I think that we need to consider, this is a fluid document. It is not written in stone yet, and we don't know until Jeff and Doug report back to us what their findings are. And I think we should look forward to hearing from you. Does that sound reasonable, Jeff and Doug? So, we have an idea of what to do with the budget. I think it is fluid, and we really don't know, and I get your point. Moving forward, how do we deal with the budget here?
Okay, two things, if I may speak.
You may.
Number one, I'm like Seth, we need a timeline to work toward this. So, how do we go about that? But before we do that, I wanna caution you that when you talk, you need both sides. There's not a police department in Virginia that wanted to lose their dispatch. So, you need to talk to, you know, to each department, of course, but you must consider the community. Has it worked for the community? So, you might-
Talk to citizens or something like that.
Right, talk to citizens. Has it worked? Because if you talk and just take the police department, of course, they don't wanna lose it, and probably they're not as happy. But you've gotta have both sides. The community, did it work? And listen to the police department, to both sides. That's what I caution you about, you know, when we do meet with Bluefield. I'm sure they're gonna have gripes. Everybody does. But you've gotta see if it works. Okay, number, how we're gonna, what kind of timeline do you suggest, Seth?
Well, I don't know. I just wanna mention that, because we don't have another budget workshop scheduled. I'm sure we'll get into that later.
I believe at the last meeting, council intentionally, in that motion of vote, was to not put a timeline on it at that time for, to fill you in. You know, because if we do a timeline and want it to be in this budget, you're gonna have to act within, you know, a few weeks. And this is a very difficult and big decision, so I'd refer to council, if you wanna put a timeline on it, or you wanna take the time you feel necessary to make the decision.
I guess even if it took us past this current budget timeline.
If you knew that's what you wanted to do, if you had an idea of what the budget was, right, it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean to have to implement it by that. I'm just saying, I think if you-
It, it, we would see the numbers next year.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, I don't think you're gonna change the budget from what Seth said.
We're not adding words.
This year anyway, because you're gonna need the, the money that you save, you're probably gonna need it.
Well, I think you'll use it all. I think you'll have some immediate savings. If you're trying to balance your budget, I know this is a good area to do it. I'm just saying, it, you need to know the numbers. Like, if you're gonna use this as an area to balance budget, we need to know what the actual numbers are, or get close to that anyway, so Heather can make an estimation, and if you're gonna use part of that savings for this year, I think you can do it. I, I know the implementation won't take, you know, place immediately, and you'll have to, that'll be part of that process, you know? Instead of saving two fifty, it might only be two hundred, whatever the number is, but I think you can do that. I think if you have, I mean, just from, you know, what I hear, it seems like that's a consensus. This is definitely something that is on the table, needs to be looked at, but-
So, Seth, what you're suggesting is the timeline, we, it basically acted not to have a timeline to be restraining us, but to have a goal, which is to definitely move forward with it. But as far as this budget is concerned, are, is the general feeling of council at this point to leave this as it is until we know what's happening?
Yeah, because the decision may, well, well, decision may, the decision may not be to, the decision may be to stay with dispatch.
Right, we, that's what I'm, I'm headed.
Could be, you know?
I think, I'm picking up on it, and I think that, that we, what we are definitely considering is moving to nine-one-one, but until we have all the facts and figures, we can't really make a decision on this budget to change it as it is.
Well said.
Is that your consensus?
That-
Or your feeling generally?
Well, well, that's well said. I mean, I think you did. You said, well, I, like I said, maybe the consensus not to move that way. I don't know.
And I'd like for you to-
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you.
Uh, if you look at the, I mean, the reason we need to, to go to that direction since two thousand nineteen, the police budget has went from a little over one point eight million to two one five one. That's like three hundred thousand in two years. I mean, you can't sustain that. We got less citizens, a lot less, like fifteen to two thousand people less, and our police budget has went up three hundred thousand dollars. And nobody wants to take anything away from the police. We want them to be the, the best, have the best equipment, the best cruisers, the best equipment. But when you see that you can save and modernize at the same time and make citizens more safe, then it's a no-brainer, okay?
Mayor, I do think that, not putting a timeline on it, but I do think, really, like I said, there's two big questions. I think we could probably, that the town, Heather, whoever could prepare us an idea, you know, after talking to Jerry or the sheriff, they probably could get us a ballpark idea of how much the radios would cost if that is, I don't even know if that is an issue still. I know at one time, just, this is just based on knowledge.
It has been.
Okay.
The radios are already in the budget, I think, on this budget.
Well, maybe they are. No, they're not.
You don't have any, I saw some police equipment.
Yeah, tasers and body worn cameras.
So, if you could get a number on that, I don't think that would be too difficult to figure out. Okay, this is what that's gonna cause.
I think Mike brought up to modernize radios in the, out of, that, the covert money.
I mean, if it was brought up, it's not in this budget.
Well, but it's in the covert, you know, the proposal for the, uh, the covert budget.
No, I, I don't know of any radios that are in anything.
I mean, Mike brought it up, if you remember, about two months ago.
We, we didn't make a decision on it.
We talked about Rat Pack repeaters.
We did.
For the fire department.
Do we, I mean, do we have, you may already know this, do we have a ballpark that we want to make this look?
No.
I, I think that's something that can be done. Yeah, we don't have to put a timeline on it, but you guys could get us a number if we know, you know, if they know they're gonna go that direction, this is what it would cause.
And I think that's something that the committee of Jeff and Doug, and whoever else wants to be on, long as he's not violating council rules, obviously, FOIA rules, then we can definitely ask, and you guys can, you're listening, and you could try to get back with council on those figures once you've talked to the sheriff and the chief.
And then easily Heather can tell you.
In one of them, maybe Bluefield didn't have to get any equipment, that it worked.
And I think, I think Brian, the sheriff also said today that he hadn't seen any-
Bluefield, uh, Bluefield.
Yeah, and he said he didn't see any equipment we had to buy that he knew of.
It would be our expense if we had to do it.
Right. You know, and, and the other thing, and the human part of it was, when we looked at all this before, was that, you know, Brian had agreed to, if he hired anybody to interview anyone who had to be let go during that process, you know, and I, I don't know if he has to, and I'm, I'm not speaking for the sheriff, but this is just from years ago. That was one of the caveats that was made, if anyone had to be let go, we ask them to give them an interview, you know, some preference.
And, and that's one of the reasons for getting those sides to look at the volume.
We, we had that conversation today in the meeting, and he anticipates if the volume goes up, that he's gonna ask the county to add another employee, so that would help our situation with our dispatch. I'm sure they would get preference.
Any further discussion on police? And I appreciate the discussion, gentlemen, because it really helps us move forward. Okay, page I'm on says fire.
Yep.
You guys with me? Okay, thank you. All right, let's see, probably, okay. Let's see, John, is, you would like to talk about here as the manager?
The only thing I'll highlight is the fire truck payment is in there, the sixty-four thousand dollars under, I can't remember if it's equipment or-
Retirement debt.
Retirement debt.
That is the fire truck payment.
That's for the yearly payment, right?
Correct.
John, do you know how many more payments we lack on that?
A lot. It was like eight hundred thousand dollars, and we've made like two or three payments.
Okay, so we're talking twenty-four, six hundred thousand dollars left roughly, okay?
It's probably through VRA, your, your interest rate's probably-
I would assume it's pretty low.
Two percent, yeah, I mean, I, I heard someone mention about, you know, potentially using some money to pay that off, but, I mean, this is my opinion. I don't recommend you doing that. If you got two percent interest through VRS and-
When I, when I looked at it, the other things that we would like to do, you know, I thought were so much more, added so much more value that, uh, because it was considered when we looked at, you know, what debt we could get rid of, but because it was gonna be, you know, six or seven hundred thousand dollars, well, you could use that new money and do a, hopefully, a lot more, get a lot more benefit out of it than just taking the debt.
Yeah, we need to stick with the VRA, the Virginia Resource Authority, isn't that what it is, or whatever it is? And it's Virginia Resource Authority, and use their low-interest money. Okay, thank you for answering my question and pointing that out. Any other thoughts about the fire department? When I look at this, I was so thankful we have a fire department. I appreciate it. Okay, moving on to rescue.
I will highlight, there is a error on-
Let's see it.
Under the third column, first prior year budget, the very last line is eight hundred and seven thousand for heating oil and fuel. That should be crossed off, so that total should be closer to, I think the total's eight hundred and seven thousand dollars for that. So, there was a line added at some point that should be zero.
John, I lost you. Where is it? I'm sorry.
Third column over last line.
First prior year budget, July twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, look at the very bottom.
The very last line.
Quite a bit of jump.
Eight oh seven.
And what should it be?
Eight hundred and seven is the total, so eight hundred and seven should be where that one point six million is. And then somewhere in there, there's a line that's been added since that year's budget that should be zero. I'm just not which, sure which one it is.
Okay, so it says heating oil, this, mix that, and put for department total should be what?
That figure.
The eight hundred and seven is the title.
Just move that down.
I got it. I got it. Thank you. I appreciate that.
And essentially, there's, one of the lines is just off.
I got you. Excel just messed up, didn't it?
Well, I had a copy and paste it, and we had added some lot, new budget lines, and I just missed that one.
Thank you. Okay, we're over to street department. Street department. Any questions here about the street department?
That was one of the comments I made, that if you look at the street department, and you look at the finance, there are, there's what, ten hundred thousand dollar difference or something, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not tracking with you. Can you restate what you, your comparison was on that?
I'm saying the finance department, not quite, but it's almost as much as we spend on the roads and so forth. I would just like a study, maybe of the finance department. Do we need all those people, and are they doing? I just think-
I think Davenport will do that.
Pardon?
I think Davenport will do that, Doug.
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping.
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping. I think they will.
I just think there's a problem, you know, the infrastructure's crumbling in Richlands. And when it takes a finance office almost as much to operate as it does on our roads, to me, that's a problem.
Any other questions? John, do you have anything else you'd like to say?
I would say that, you know, that's more than just finances, HR as well as mine, so it's not just people that do just finance.
Well, that's, I'm talking about the whole office, including you, HR, and everybody in there. I'm talking like-
That's all I was clarifying, that it is not, it's not just, you know, like the finance officer and the-
I'm talking, we had sixty-five hundred people in town, four people ran it. Now, we've got probably five thousand, there's eight or nine in there. We doubled, we doubled the finance office and lost population. I just think we're a little bit top heavy, but that's mine.
There's five employees.
Five?
Yeah.
You've got five in the whole office?
I mean, they have the utility clerks that work for all the departments, but you have HR, finance, two others and myself, that's five.
That's have, gentlemen, just one at a time, please.
I'm sorry, you've got eight people in that office at least.
You say eight? John Hammond, did you say?
There's five in finance, correct.
Okay.
What about your clerks and all that?
The three utility clerks are not within the.
That's fine, I call that, I'm talking total.
Total people that work at Town Hall?
Four or five years ago, four people ran, including the clerks, utility and all that. Okay, I'm saying now you've got eight people in there, including your clerks and all. I'm talking all the people that work in that office right over there. You can't divide them and say, you know, I'm talking the whole office. I'm saying it's doubled in the last few years to what it was when we had a lot more population. And with technology, seems like a lot of that work, I don't understand why technology's not helped us and we have to add so many employees. That's my take.
How many, how many employees do we have on street department? Do we find them as a crew? Is that what we've got, like what's?
While you're looking, could I say one thing, comparison? If you look at.
You may.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to say you may before you start, go ahead.
Okay, okay, if you look at the street department, three years ago, we had a million, two hundred and twenty six thousand dollars in the budget. If you look at it now, we've only went up a little over a hundred thousand dollars to date. Okay, you look back at the finance department or the main office, they have doubled. Look at the sanitation department, it's almost the same as it was three or four years ago. But yet, the main office has doubled what it spends. Okay, why do some departments stay the same and we operate them more efficiently? But yet, some departments, that's got all the power, they double. To me, that doesn't make sense, you know?
Let's get.
Twelve on the street.
Twelve.
All right, did you find the number Heather to answer?
Twelve on the street.
Twelve men, okay, including our.
Including the supervisor.
Supervisor, okay, thank you.
I guess my focus is we should spend more on the roads and take care of the citizens. And most of our town crew get nothing, they make minimum wage probably. But yet, you look at some of the higher people on salary, they make pretty well. So I think we've forgotten part of the workers and the citizens on the infrastructure. That's my focus.
It's gotta be clerical.
It looks like something happened between nineteen and twenty and twenty and twenty one, there was a two hundred thousand dollar difference.
Yeah.
So I don't know if positions were switched around or accounting was changed.
I can tell you what happened.
Has to be allocation, health insurance as well.
Or is that when we switched from shared?
Do you want? Can I give some his?
They're trying to think here.
That's when they went to split it off into shared costs. Yeah, I think it was an accounting, when we went, changed the shared resources, so instead of paying it.
Has to be.
Out of other departments, as you're part of each person's salary, you're transferring it to admin and then paying it out of there for accounting purposes.
Okay, yeah, just a minute, please, one minute, I don't understand what they're saying. Give you a breather, okay? Honestly. Would you say that one more time?
So if you look at nineteen to twenty and twenty to twenty one, the first two lines, we went from eighty four thousand dollars in salaries to two hundred and eighty four and then forty thousand dollars to eighty eight thousand. I think there was an accounting when we switched from paying out, you know, like each department just paid a little bit of somebody's salary to transferring that amount over and paying out of that department, as we've done, you know, the transfer, shared, you know, resources, shared costs. I think it was an accounting, so this department didn't balloon, it was just the way we did the accounting that you made, you know, the year end look different.
It's an accounting practice.
I think they're changing the accounting.
So without my trying to do it right here, because I would have to study it myself. I just, what I'm thinking is, if we were to, I'm following what you're saying, but I'm trying to, if we go back and look at these other departments, we could see that there was a change in them that has reflected the difference reflected in finance.
I think so, because if you look at the town manager's salary, it went from forty one thousand to eighty eight. I would assume that forty one was what was being paid out of the general fund and the rest of it was being paid by, you know, water, sewer, electric, based on the amount of work they did for each department versus now, we pay it all out of general fund and those departments just transfer that money to the general fund, then we pay it out. It was an accounting change, I would assume, you kind of simplify it and make it easier to, you know, account for.
Same for health and retirement, the same way.
Doug, I think you want to say something?
Yeah, I do, yeah.
Doug would like the floor.
Okay, you're correct, and they were divided in each department and they were spread out like that. But if you go back and take all the totals, it's not an accounting thing. It's if you go back three or four years and get them out of each department, it's still doubled. What happened is that before Tim Taylor left, two or three years, he went through a phase where, if you'll check, the salaries went up big time. Just before he left, he almost doubled a lot of salaries.
That's not true.
I've got the floor, and if you want to go back and check what the salaries were three or four years ago, at the budget, you'll see I'm correct, they jumped three or four years ago, big time, just before Tim left. And if you'll go back when we had sixty five hundred people and check the salaries several years ago, it has doubled since then.
Thank you, Doug. Okay, any other comments, ladies and gentlemen, including Heather and the clerk? Heather, any thoughts? Any other, anybody have thoughts on this? So I have turned the page, if I've turned it prematurely, please tell me. Sanitation. Sanitation. Unbelievably important, all of this, okay, salaries went, I'm looking really fast. There are no changes here as I'm looking at it, John, from the budget that we have been presented, proposals we have been presented.
Yeah, there's nothing major, there may have been some small change, but nothing significant.
Okay, could I say one thing?
You may.
Thank you. If you look at the budget for the sanitation department, there's certain departments, as I said, that's went almost double. If you add it up, and I can prove it, look at what they were in two thousand eighteen and what they are now. There's what, twelve thousand dollars difference, what's recommended? Seems like some departments have been forgotten and other departments have got along quite well. That's my point. If we could run every department like the sanitation, street, I mean, Richlands wouldn't have a problem with budget. I mean, they've done quite well. In fact, I would have gave them raises compared to what their budget is, okay?
Thank you, Doug. Any other comments or questions on sanitation? Turning the page, we are on recreation. I will ask John if he has any comments here, John?
No, I don't believe we have any major changes or things to note.
Okay. Let me just look here a minute myself, okay? So the major, you know, like dollars and cents is what you're saying, if there's any changes at all?
Yeah, not that I'm aware of, or anything of note that's really changed much from last year.
Okay, I mean, I'm speaking of changes from that first.
Neither, there's not, just any changes for either.
Okay. So I spent time looking at that and I just want to make sure I'm on track with you, thank you.
We may have made some small cuts, but nothing significant.
Okay.
I think it's amazing.
Doug, did you want to talk?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, thank you, Matt. I think it's amazing how well they've done in three years. Three years ago, their budget was four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, now it's two hundred and sixty six thousand. That's a big difference. I think they've done well.
To employ, to employ.
Well, I mean, I don't care how they've done it, they've done it. And they've.
Eventually, I think we will have to add back the employee, there's, it's something that eventually will be discussed again, but at this point, we haven't included one.
So for the moment, we're at two sixty six? Is that correct? So for the fiscal year coming up, we're at two sixty six?
Yes, correct.
That's the recommended, okay, any questions on that? Thank you. I'm turning my page and I am now on community and civic facilities. So we have.
I don't believe anything in this has changed from last year, the only difference is an additional two hundred dollars in donations. That money was allocated for the section house for additional cleaning supplies. That's something they've, you mentioned to this council on numerous occasions, that, you know, we could help them provide some cleaning supplies, toilet paper, things of that nature. They're still more willing, more than willing to do the cleaning and upkeep of that property.
Thank you. Any other thoughts or questions here? Turn the page. We're now on the next page, here we are. Sorry, that was not nice, capital, finance office.
Well, I'll, really the only two things in capital this year are fifty one thousand, five eighty two for a command vehicle for the fire department and then a hundred and forty eight thousand dollars for a dump truck for the street department. We've ordered the dump truck, as I mentioned earlier, we still hope to get it, you know, delivered in next year's budget. There are potential, so some additional charges, you know, due to surcharges on items like that. So we will, you know, hopefully, there won't be much more, but as of right now, we're already looking at a six thousand dollar surcharge on that purchase.
Thanks, John. I made a check mark as we were going through it the first time and just want to make sure I'm following, okay? It's on the line that talks about vehicles, boats, et cetera, it's ten fifty four fifteen, six hundred and forty thousand, six four zero 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 zero. Is that what you're talking about?
I'm looking at the very last column, recommended. And the only two items that have anything in them are those two items for capital.
Okay, I see them.
And that was the dump truck and the command vehicle. Everything else that was asked for was cut.
Got you, okay. I thank you, I follow you. Any further comments or questions, comments? Do you want to say something, Heather? Do you have a comment, Heather?
No, no.
I wasn't sure. Okay, I want to make sure everybody's heard. Okay, thank you. All right, I'm turning the page and on my page it says revenue. Revenue, that's, okay. So we have general fund, general fund, general fund, ARPA, okay.
Essentially, this is just a summary of the previous pages and show how, with the revenues that are projected on the next couple of stapled packets with the current budgeted expenditures and where we would end up. As I mentioned earlier, we do have the COLA in there that we decided not to do, the increase on personal property and real estate. And then we have that employee turnover that we anticipate, that additional savings that was used to essentially get to a balanced budget.
Any questions on this page at all?
You got council budget a hundred and eighteen thousand?
That's what it is on the very first page of this handout. All the numbers on this page are basically being pulled from the prior pages. The only ones that aren't are your revenues there on the next handout.
I was thinking about sixty five thousand, yeah, oh, that's the attorney. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Where's the electric? At the very bottom, I think.
Yeah, it's general fund, water, sewer, electric.
Sixty five thousand, six fifty nine, is that what you're asking about? Yeah, the very bottom.
Okay. Okay, in the electric revenue, are you counting the three hundred and seventy five thousand as a, how are you counting that, that you're taking out?
It's an expense.
Talking about on revenue, if you're talking about the transfer out for shared resources, it would be an expense.
Yeah.
We've just gone through general fund.
So the sixty five thousand here, that's coming out of the rate, is that coming out of the rate money?
Race stabilization or the reserves.
Okay.
Essentially, when GDS did their calculations, even if we counted as close, you know, cut it as close as they, you feel comfortable, best case scenario, we'd still be in the hole about sixty five thousand in electric, but.
So we pull that money to break even?
Correct. So if you want to go to this page, this is the expenditures for utilities.
So we are in the next.
The next handout. Correct. Should be water treatment plant.
Members of council, we're going to this next booklet called General Ledger Budget Report, Water Treatment Plant, is that correct, John?
Correct.
All right, would you like to have anything to say about this, John?
No, I don't really have anything on, you know, the water treatment plant. At this time, we have seen some pretty drastic increases in our chemicals, so there's definitely been some budget increases due to that, but there's things like that that are kind of out of our control, we still have to have the chemicals to treat and process the water.
Okay. Any questions or comments here on water treatment? From the left? From the right? You may.
Thank you. Here's another thing I, thing that we shouldn't be doing. I mean, we should look at cutting the budget where we could because there's a lot of fat in it. And what we're doing is causing the water rates to go up by transferring money. Here we're taxing it, we're taking you're taking out a hundred and thirty five thousand and you're taking another sixteen, so you're taking, you're transferring out of the water system, which will have to make up on rates. You're transferring a hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of it, one of the utilities. Pardon?
We still have to pay it.
What?
We have to pay that, man.
Oh, I know, were you paying it to, you're taking it, you're taking it from one department out of the water system, moving it into the finance office in a general budget. No, it's got, right here, it's got transferred out a hundred and thirty five thousand, five hundred thirteen, then you got sixteen.
That's your shared resource, so we'd have to pay it out of something else. We still have to find it, right?
No, I mean, you cut, you cut your budget, as long as you take money out of the utilities such as water, sewer and electric rates, you're gonna raise those rates higher and make it on people that's paying those rates. And all, if you look, you're taking out, which we'll talk about later, in the utilities, you're taking out six hundred thousand dollars in shared resources. It doesn't take, you're paying the whole, three, you're paying eighty percent of what the finance department is doing out of the utilities.
But we have to pay that, right?
Well, you should pay it out of your, out of your revenue, not your utilities, because it.
That's not, that's not true.
But where would you get the money? Where would you get the money from?
You cut, you cut your budget where that you're not overspending and using your utilities, no. There's not another town says that has an electric system. Lebden don't have one, Bluefield doesn't have one, how do you think they pay their bills? They watch their budget, they don't have an electric fund to use as a piggy bank.
I spoke to another municipality today and they do with electric, as we, you know, we got rid of the pilot in that. I have my notes here, for this proposed budget, we had six hundred and forty thousand dollars proposed. For this proposed budget, we had $640,000 proposed shared resources. That's for water, sewer, and electric. That money is transferred to the general fund to pay for IT, which we split between each department, because everybody has to deal with computers, servers, and needs that service. So we split that up. Then salaries, so it pays for HR, because, you know, water doesn't have an HR person, so, you know, pays for that. Pays for the ladies up front that take utility bills, pays for part of my salary, because I don't work for just the general fund. You know, I deal with water, sewer, electric. And then, you know, our benefits, those employees' benefits, and then we had $20,000 in some miscellaneous expenditures. So, you know, upfront, they need, you know, a new printer or a computer, you know, things of that nature, you know, that's where it comes from. But essentially, all that money gets transferred to pay salaries for people that do work for that department.
Just a minute, please. One second. Let me digest what John said.
And that's what you call a shared resource?
I just wanted, one minute, Doug. I'm trying to personally think about all this, and I know you want to say something, but just a minute, please, while I personally digest it, okay? Okay, I, I think I'm following you. Doug, do you want to say something?
Yeah, instead of utilities or something, especially electricity and water, that everybody has got to have. And when you take money out of it, instead of cutting the budget, like, instead of giving 80,000 here, everybody comes in here, you give to a charity, or, uh, instead of giving it away, cut your budget where you don't have to sponge off your utilities, which makes it harder on your citizens. You, you, you've got, you've got a tax for everything. You raised personal tax, you've raised everything. You're supposed to pay your finance and your other you out of the revenue from your real estate taxes, from your personal taxes, the cigarette tax that you have. You get 700 and some thousand dollars off a meal tax. That's what you're supposed to run the office out of. You're not supposed to use your utilities as a crutch, and that's what you're doing. Every one of them, you're diverting money that they pay, and that adversely raises rates where I think we should have had four or five people cut off the electricity in, say, a month or so. If you look at it...
Are we on electric or water? I lost, Doug.
Pardon?
Are we on electric?
Uh, well, I'm just bringing, I'm just using electric as a utility, as an example. Okay, we cut off 80 people from the electricity, 80. And how can you cut off 80 people with no electricity, no lights, no heat, and raise the rates and not cut your budget and give 80,000 to IDA or 80,000 here, or everybody comes in, you help them out? It's not your money, okay? And I would, you could cut this budget a million half and never have to live off your utilities, but that's what Richlands has done for 15 years.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, it's very simple.
Mike, would you like to talk?
I would. It's very simple. We have employees that work for each utility. We have employees that work for each utility. It's not hard. It's simple math. $135,000, this is a portion of employees that work here and work for this utility. The same for the next one, and the same for the next one. They work for those utilities. That's where that money is coming. That's, we're not taking money out of a fund. That, they're getting paid for doing their work. That's, that's what that is. That's, it's, it's, it baffles me, we, we can't get past this, because that's, that's what that's there for. There's no, if we want to talk about what other, other towns do, I suggest people call the town of Bedford and see what they do, because they have an electrical system. All right? Let me tell you what their electrical system does. They give them a half a million dollars out of their electrical fund just to put in general fund. Do we do that? No, we do not. We don't do anything like that. That's what it's there for. The reason we have the rates that we have, the reason they're as low as they are, is because each of these employees work for these utilities. Right? Has it helped us keep our rates down? Absolutely. We're very fortunate to have our utilities, because the employees work for the utility. Right? That's why we've, that's why we have such low rates. Anybody that says we don't have low rates, I suggest you do your research and find out what the rates are around here. Look at your water and sewer. Go, go call somebody from Cedar Bluff and see what they pay for water and sewer rates, and see what we pay. That's what I suggest. And that's because we, you have it.
I, I wasn't sure if we were going to get to that or any of it, but I have comparison to the same as I did last year, if you'd like me to pass one out.
Yeah, it's, folks, this is a, it's not a transfer out, it handles salaries. That's, that's what it is. That's what it shows.
If you... Just a minute, please, so that we don't have combat. I would, Heather wants to say something, so I think she's next line. Doug, you can get to talk.
Yeah, it should be extra.
Mike has talked, and now Heather wants to say something. So let's let Heather say what she wants to say. Thank you.
It really just depends on what, what the employee does. So, like, John's salary, you know, wouldn't all be provided under electric or all water or just those three, or neither would mine, but like, it depends on what that employee's job duties are, is how it would be split up. So everybody's is not the same portion, if that makes sense. So depending on, well, just, for example, John's versus mine, his is 45% is government, the other was electric, water, sewer, to equal 100. So like, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't all go in electric, it doesn't all go in water, it doesn't all, or it's not just those three. It depends on like, what that person does. But then if you take a look at the utilities clerks, that theirs is, that's what they're there for. So theirs is a little bit different. So, for example, we have one of them, and only 10% of theirs is going towards government. The rest is 30 electric, 30 water, 30 sewer. How much of their time is spent devoted to that particular thing? That's how it's, you know, set up. And, you know, from my understanding, which I wasn't here when it was first initiated, but it came through as a request from the auditors, and that's why the town manager's salary is now listed separate. And that is why this is done the way it is, because it depends on what that person's job duties are. We don't just make up the number, because that person might be assigned more so on electric. That person might be assigned to, depending on what their job duties are, it's depends on how it's split up. And it doesn't, you know, that's, that's the deciding factor of how that is, is split.
Okay. Any other thoughts, Heather?
No.
Okay. Doug, want, Doug, go ahead, say what you want to say.
Okay. If you look at the water treatment plant, it's self-sufficient in salaries. It pays its own salaries. Salaries and wages, 343,000. That's what it pays. It's not like, they pay what the expenses they have. Okay? If, if you look at the utilities, they were taken a lot more, but I think if you add it up, it's like 600,000 now. The finance department is what, 865? Utilities are paying 80% of everything they do. That's not, they do a lot more than just those utilities as far as revenue, real estate, and all that.
Let me digest just a minute, please. Let me think about what you're saying, okay?
Yeah.
What was the percentage you said?
Probably 80%.
Just a minute, I'm just, I'm fine. I'm just going to get that in my brain.
Okay.
I think we need to pause. Doug, I'm listening. I would have to get all this, I have to think about figures.
I can give you numbers for each one.
Do you have them written down?
I got them in my head.
Well, I'm on these, I've seen...
Well, they're on here, you can look them up. It's, they're taking 375 from electric, 200 and some from one utility, 150 from that. They were taking 200, and they did away with that. But if you add all those figures up, 80% of the finance office is being paid by the utilities, so they're working 20% on all the other stuff that they do.
Okay, thank you.
That's not true.
Mike, did you want to speak?
Yeah, that's not true.
I think that's the only thing that comes out of your mouth.
Especially when you talk.
Gentlemen, please. Gentlemen.
Real man.
I can back up my figures.
No, you can't.
Just a minute, please.
No, you can't.
When I came here tonight, I, I, I just wanted to make sure everybody knows this. I don't want to have to rain on this gavel. That's the last thing I want to do, and I'm not going to do it, because we're just going to have peace in the family. We can all disagree, we're not going to go to war.
I'm not going to sit here and be called a liar.
You haven't been...
I've been called a liar with that over there.
Those are harsh words, please. And let's, let's watch our words. Words turn into actions. Mike, did you want to say something?
You know, he, he can say whatever he'd like. You know, the fact of the matter is, the numbers don't lie, they're, they're here. I can, I can, it's exhausting, truthfully, sometimes. I'll continue to provide facts, that's all I can do. That's, that's what I'll lean on.
Doug, you want one final statement on this one?
Yeah, the citizens know the truth. They know their bills. And anybody can look on here and see the 375, the 200 and some thousand they diverted from each utility. They're diverting, the one we're talking about, 150,000 alone from water treatment plant. And if you, as we go down the line, I'll point those figures out, and you'll see that I'm telling the truth, that it adds up to about 600,000 that they're diverting to the finance office, okay?
Thank you.
But we'd still have to pay that out of the general fund, right?
Yeah. Yes.
Is that right? So we'd have to come up with 600,000 in the general fund, if we're not going to take these out.
Well, if you can't charge it, if, like, if, you've got to justify the job, so if they're not...
Exactly. That's what I'm saying.
I don't understand, I don't understand what...
You wouldn't have to do that if you cut, there's 300,000 counting overtime and everything from the, this patch. That's 300,000 savings that you wouldn't have to take out of utilities alone. And this is, this whole budget is padded all the way down the line. All you would have to do is charge each department, cut your department 10%, and you wouldn't have to take anything out of the, each of the utilities, and it'd make it a lot easier for the citizens to pay their bills, and they wouldn't be cut off without any electricity.
Heather, is there anything you would like to ask or say?
Well, you know, the correct accounting that you're supposed to do is to charge based on that person's job. So if their job is to monitor bill and take payments utility-wise, then that's what their job is going to be charged to.
Okay.
They don't work at the wastewater plant. They work up here. So just because they're in a different building doesn't mean they're not working for the wastewater plant.
I understand.
If that makes sense.
It does.
One last thing, and I'll shut up.
Just a minute, Doug. I think you've really, you can say it, but I really think you've made your point.
Well, I mean...
Not in what you could do to wrap it up, but try.
Okay, I've got a good point. You've got, let's take the electricity, for example. You've got Old Town, what I call Old Town, they're getting charged high cost for their electricity. Okay, you've got us sitting up in Hidden Valley, we don't get charged that, we're on AEP. If it's ever taken to court, it's illegal. You shouldn't make one side of town pay for the other, and the people in Hidden Valley, not me, but most of them are well off, and they could well afford to pay their own share, but they're getting a free ride. And to me, that's not right.
Thank you, Doug. Okay, shall we move on? Ladies and gentlemen, please. I have turned the page, and my page says wastewater. Mr. O'Daniel, would you care to comment on wastewater, please?
There's nothing really, you know, of note beyond, you know, some basic repairs and things, and we're looking forward to the large-scale upgrades that you are aware of.
Okay. Doug, would you like to comment on wastewater? I'm just asking.
Okay, yeah. If you'll look down, there's a transfer out, that's shared expense again, pops up 128.5, another 17,000, so that's another, close to 150,000 coming out of the 600 that I pointed out and already pointed out. That's 300 of it right there, okay? That I'm supposedly lying about.
In my meager mind, I was a step ahead of you. It's not often, but I was reading...
That's, that's why you're a good mayor.
All right. Is anyone else? Mike, do you want to say something?
No, I don't.
Okay. Anyone else, a member of council, want to comment?
Just remember, I've got 300 on my bill right now.
I'm counting on my fingers.
Okay. Rod, what might be helpful? On these, uh, transfer out, you have, you can have, you have a breakdown of, it might be helpful maybe to share that, and I understand what Doug's saying. What Doug's, to Doug's point, and I'm not speaking for Doug, I'm just, this is what I understand from what he's saying. Doug's saying that if we took the funds from the general fund, tax collection, whatever, and you paid this up here out of tax collection, it should be self-sufficient. And then these funds, but I think, I think we're all on the same page, I just don't think it's everybody's understanding. I think on the transfer out piece, if you broke, maybe if you had that broke down and said, okay, this is Sarah's salary.
I think with that, you'd run into the same issue, because then you'd have somebody in Hidden Valley paying a property tax to supplement somebody in town's electric rate. And I think there's a bigger issue with that legally than being able to transfer from electric fund to your general fund.
Well, I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying, like, if there's, if you've got a line item, you know what that's, according to what you're saying, you know what that's paying for. So this is, this is this portion of Sarah's salary, or, and I'm just using Sarah, because I know these folks up here when I come to pay bills, but it's this portion of this person's salary, it's this portion of this person, and that might be helpful to see...
I have my notes, I can pass them around. I don't have a copy for everybody, so you'll have to...
That is a very good suggestion, that way...
I'm just saying, it might be helpful to see what those are.
So we can be clear.
Yeah.
And I welcome your suggestion. Doug, I think that would be helpful, what Seth is suggesting, suggesting...
Pass it around if you want.
Is that possible?
I'll have my notes, if y'all want to pass it around, and everybody take a look, or do you want us to go make copies, and we can come circle back to...
Probably copies, we can each have.
All right, when Heather comes back, we'll circle back to this.
Okay, thank you. And that's a good suggestion. I mean, I'm getting it as best I can.
All right, so do you want to move on to revenues, and then we'll come back?
Let's move on, and we'll come back to that, okay? Thank you for the comments, everyone. So that's wastewater. Next, we have water and sewer line maintenance. Thank you very much, we appreciate that. Okay. So, water and sewer line maintenance. And let's see here, I'm looking here. John, do you have any comments on this particular section?
No, I was going to say, if you want, we could go ahead and move on, beyond, you know, beyond the utilities and go to the revenues, and then when they bring that information back, we could circle back.
Okay.
Unless everybody wants to go through. Because I think we've already discussed electric, and that's the last page in line. Maintenance really falls under water and sewer.
Okay.
Anyways.
Well, is council agreeable to take John's suggestion and move on to revenues?
Are we going to come back? I have a couple of things on electric.
We can, probably, we can, shall we go forward just on this line? Okay with it? That way, we keep on one sheet.
We're on line, we're on line maintenance now.
Yes, I'm suggesting that. So water, sewer line maintenance, okay. Any comments, John?
No.
Okay. Members of council?
There's another transfer out here of 16,000, almost 17,000.
Okay. And I think Seth's question, and what we're doing may help us to understand those things. Okay? Okay. So, any other questions here about line maintenance?
I guess my main thing is, I just think we should have a more efficient budget. And if we didn't take from the utilities, it would make us have a better budget and watch what we were spending. That's my major point.
Okay. Okay, I turn the page to electrical department. So, I believe that's the last page in this booklet, I'll call it. Electrical department, let's just look down through here. John, I think this probably bears some comment from you. You've talked about it once, but do you mind to reiterate this, please?
Essentially, the first item in yellow is we cut two, there's two positions that have been open. That was the electrical engineer when he left, and then we had somebody kind of shift over to take on some of his duties, and we never filled that position. And then we also had a lineman position that was open. The department really could use those individuals, but at this time, based on the, you need to try to limit our electric rates as much as possible. We think we can hold off on those, but it will be something we have to do at some point in the future.
And then... I have a question, one quickie. And that is, looking at salaries and wages, how many people, taking into account, we did not replace Kevin, and we've got a lineman?
I believe it's three or four. Do you know George?
James and...
Four total, including Alan. So four total for the electric department.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay. And let's see, go ahead. Did everybody follow with the first yellow? Highlight is?
Yes.
233. Any questions, Daryl? Mike, Seth, any questions? Doug, Jeff, on the yellow up here at the top, the highlighted part, at the very top, at the very top, Doug, 233?
233.
On the top right. Just trying to follow the highlighted parts first, okay?
No, that's fine.
Okay. Then let's go on down just for a minute to the other yellow highlighted parts. John, would you tell us what that is, please, again?
Essentially, the first one is the project, some of the projected increase on the additional cost that electric could go up. It's very volatile market right now, so it's very difficult to project what the cost will be for electricity for the next year. But as GDS presented, they did say that we would be in a deficit, so I wanted to make sure that these figures reflected what their research showed. And then the next line item is just the pilot that has been cut from electric. As part of their presentation, they said that if we cut the two positions, cut the pilot, that we'd be able to keep the electric rates at their current spot for the next year.
And again, for those who don't pick up all the acronyms, and I struggle with them myself, pilot is an acronym for payment in lieu of taxes, okay? For the people here.
And it's one we're probably going to quit using, we're going to use, you know, a different term, but, you know, since it's what we used last year, you're familiar with it, I wanted to continue, so you're aware. You know exactly what it is.
Thank you. Okay, so, thank you for explaining those. Doug, I think you want to say something?
Yeah. I'm glad you did away with 200. That helped a lot, but it would have been 800 if you'd not taken that out. But this figure, 70, 7,309,463, is that what you have to collect in rates to balance?
No, that would put us in a deficit.
Pardon?
We'll, we'll lose money on electric.
I know, but is that what rates you expect to collect?
No, that's on the revenue page.
Which one, Doug?
This is just expenditures.
Electrical department expenditures.
We will spend more money in the electric department than we'll bring in in revenue, is the projection right now.
Oh, I know, but in that, don't you, that figure is based on how much the rate you are going to collect?
It's based on expenses only.
Well, I know, but...
Rates are on another page.
To balance, you have to collect that much? Oh, I know, it's the same thing, oh.
No, no, this is what the revenue is projected, that figure.
Okay. Okay. The revenue that you have to collect, it's similar, 7,243, I'm saying 7,3, but that revenue is what you have to collect in the rates. Is that, is that correct?
The revenue in red on that page is the revenue we're projecting to collect.
Okay, but that's your rates that you're going to collect from citizens, right?
Yeah.
Okay. My point is, if you look at the figure, you're transferring out, again, here's another, it was higher, it was 350, but you've taken some of it off. You've got 259,760 transferred out. You're taking another 17, close to 17,000, okay? When you add that as an expense, that raises the rates that you have to collect, that 7,200,000, odd dollars, 43. I'm saying, every time you transfer something out to use in the finance office for something else other than electricity, that causes the rates to go up.
It's only being used for electricity. And we can call it, you know, a payment for salaries, and then you transfer to, so they can pay the salaries, you know. We can call it any term, but it's essentially them paying the salaries for the employees that do work for the electric department.
Okay.
Same as water and sewer.
At the top, you've got salary and wages.
That's, that's for the four individuals that work in the department.
I'm saying, when you transfer it out...
So do you want me just to move the transfer out into salaries?
Pardon?
So I can move...
No, I don't want you to transfer anything out at all.
No, 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 just move it up. I can move it from transfers out, just put it up at salaries. It's the same thing.
Because it's not, it is not. You're transferring out to use it for something other than electricity.
So if I, if I stop transferring it out, and I just move it up to salaries?
No. No, you're missing my point. You're, you're moving it to another department and using it for something else.
Okay, so if I stop...
Or if you looked at the budget and cut your budget, you wouldn't have to steal from the electric department.
Yeah, that's my train of thought.
Okay.
I think... 10-minute recess, thank you.
My class was very complimentary. We were glad they said, she seems like a nice lady. I said, well, she is. They were very appreciative. Let's see, we need Darryl. Darryl, here he comes.
Yeah, well, uh.
Heather on her way.
Needs more of them.
I think let's wait for John and Heather.
I don't like the hard ones.
John has on a double vinted suit jacket. They're really helpful because, I won't say why, but they're very helpful. I like your double vents, John, on your suit jacket. Appreciate you.
Well. Very simple.
Well, no, it works, but it's a summer gray and the double vents are very helpful. We'll talk about it later. It's fashion. Let's resume this meeting of our budget workshop. Okay, so council, we are now, I left off because I needed to move and I hope that helped everyone to have a little breath of air. We're on electrical and we've had some discussion and I know that one thing John distributed just now to all the members of council and to the audience are the total shared cost. And this was Seth's suggestion and I think it was a good one to help everybody understand how these are shared. So John, would you like to take over on this part right here?
They're making a copy of my copy, but essentially at the at the top, this is the total shared revenue cost. I did just realize that the IT for line maintenance is not in there, but it would wash in the next line that's all the IT for all four of those departments. Salaries are split up as you see on the second page here for each employee depending on if it's governmental, electric, water, or sewer. And then the benefits are split up the same way, but we've got those in different lines. So I wanted to make sure we broke that out. And then other is just, you know, some random things like, you know, if they have professional dues or training or advertising they have to do that's, you kind of, it doesn't really fit into a, you know, specific category, but I wanted other to capture all that additional money that is transferred for those costs for that department. I believe the third and fourth page is actually a, kind of a summary of what was spent and how it was spent for a month snapshot.
Let's just talk about this, John, sorry. I'm looking, so Dane, government, everybody look at the top, name government, electric, water, sewer total, top columns, okay? The titles, is that where you are, John?
Yep.
All right, the first person is John, that's you. So governmental is forty-five?
Percent.
Explain for those, these are percentages.
Yep.
All right, and then you have twenty percent of your pay is for electric?
Correct.
Is that right? Eighteen percent of your pay is for water?
Correct.
If I'm wrong, I'm just trying to keep it real simple for me. Seventy percent of your pay is for sewer.
Correct.
Totalling one hundred percent of your salary. Okay. Letty is seventy percent is governmental, is that correct? Ten percent for electric.
Correct.
And ten percent for water, ten percent for sewer, which constitutes one hundred percent of her pay.
Correct.
Is that correct? All right, Heather, where is Heather? You know this whole thing, nothing about me, without me, she should be here.
Somebody's needed her.
Okay, I'm just checking. It's a little thing I try to bear in my mind. We all talk about people, but it was matters of importance, it should be all, everybody present.
And the rest of the numbers are concurrent with your first.
Yeah. So we have Letty is seventy, ten, ten, ten. All right, Heather is seventy, ten, ten, ten. Amanda is ten, thirty, thirty, thirty. Sarah is ten, thirty, thirty, thirty. And Julie is five, seventy-five percent of her pay comes in electric, ten percent for water and ten percent for sewer. Susan is twenty-five percent for the governmental side. Electric is fifty. Water is thirteen, sewer is twelve, that's a hundred percent of her salary. And we have down here the totals. So John, do you want to talk about these particularly at the very bottom, the percentages, please? Point three-two.
I think that would be essentially be point two, or point three-two, thirty-two percent of the entire amount transferred for salaries would go, would come from governmental, thirty-four from electric, point seventeen percent from water, seventeen percent from sewer for a total of a hundred percent.
Okay.
For those employees.
Okay. I hope that helps and I appreciate the suggestion. I appreciate your bidding supply of this. Are there any questions about this particular page?
So you tell me you've developed a formula that says
Yeah, this is something
For the electric utility.
This is something we've been doing for years and years and as, you know, jobs shift or change, you know, we have the leverage to say, okay, now this person's doing more for water, so we need to, you know, adjust based on what their work, but it's supposed to be as close as we can estimate to, you know, what somebody does on a daily basis for each department.
Sure. So for the electric utility, this tells you what each employee works per the utility and tells you that you take thirty-four percent, that's where you get the thirty-four percent, correct? And that's what you take out of the electric utility because of the work done within the electric utility.
Yes.
Same for water, same for sewer.
Yep.
Same for gov.
Correct.
Got it. Makes perfect sense.
That's where you get the term shared.
If I were to share this on, online, do I need to take these, would it be?
I would, I'd prefer you take the names, because I don't want
Sure.
What's a total salary of, could you give us total salary of like twenty percent of your salary, ten, ten, thirty, thirty?
Yeah, my salary is in one of these pages.
Well, I mean, it would, the salaries down there, if you multiply thirty-four percent times three seventy-five.
I think if you look at the second page, it'll show you what, does it have salaries on there? The very first one, about eight thousand dollars for that month.
Well, I'm, I'm talking, if you multiply thirty-four percent.
So you could probably take a look at the first page with what's projected for next year for total salaries.
Oh, I know, I'm just telling you, if you took thirty-four percent of three hundred and seventy-five, which you're transferring out, that's only a, I did it in my head, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Doesn't add up.
Well, it wouldn't be a percentage of that, it'd be a percentage of the total salaries. So you had to add all those salaries together and take thirty-four percent of that. So you'd have to add my salary plus all those other employees and get, you know, like eight hundred thousand and take thirty percent of that, or, you know, so it's a million, thirty-five percent of that would be three hundred and fifty thousand. And then that's just for the salaries, it doesn't include the next line, which is the IT or the other, other expenses that, you know, are incurred.
Yeah, that's just
That are usually pretty minimal. I think this year we're actually trending below what will have to be transferred. So it's not like we guarantee we're going to transfer that money, it's only, you know, so if, you know, if we had turnover here at town hall, well, those employees are listed on here, so when we're not paying that salary out, that amount doesn't get transferred, so it stays in the electric, water, and sewer.
I guess my, my point is, if you would do a logical budget and not spend on wasteful spending like that we do and pad everything, you wouldn't have to be taking this out.
You still have to pay the salaries for what they do.
You have to make a budget and if you did a good budget and like spending on three hundred thousand dollars a year on, on dispatch, you wouldn't have to take it out of here. That's my major point. You wouldn't have to take it out if you did a logical budget and lived within your means instead of using the utilities as a piggy bank and raising it by salary.
Even if we had a reserve and were profitable in the general fund, this is the fair way to, to show those, you know, costs, you know, is how every other town that I know of handles it for their utilities, if they have electric or not.
Five years ago, we had two million dollars in reserve.
That's before
Can you imagine? Yeah, but we had it, okay? For the last four or five years, we blew over two and a half million dollars on these stupid budgets that somebody comes up with and overspins, okay? You're gonna, it's going to come to an end because you're a half million dollars in the hole and you keep adding tax after tax after tax. One of these days, you're going to have to really look at the budget, say, can I afford this, can I afford this? We never do, but your time's coming, it's just a matter of time. Okay?
Well, anyone else have any questions on this particular piece right here?
I appreciate this. This is nice. This is what citizens should see. So I'm gonna throw this out there if that's good.
I'm just asking you to redact the names if anybody does share it.
Yeah, well, it just shows like, okay, we got six hundred and forty thousand dollars in shared costs going out, here's where they go. Here's where it is. All right, and I think that's the biggest question is, if, you know, if it's showing here it is, what is it? Right, that's the biggest, that's the biggest thing. What, what is it? Right? And this shows it. Here's the black and white. No questions? It's right here. So, thank you.
Just a minute, please.
They're on the, the projector on the front page of all that's been projected for water, sewer, electric.
On the front.
And we'll have to, I'm not a hundred percent sure that line maintenance was in this, but I can update those numbers to double, to make sure they're
I can wait until, if you want to get it
Yeah, I can send you all this.
Yeah, send it to council if you want.
One, one question. About ten years ago, for five years, we never took anything out of the electric. It wasn't taken out, if you check the history. There was no cost, power cost adjustment, there was no in-lie taxes, no, nothing, nothing was taken out of the electric. How in the world did rich lands exist those five years on a budget without using utilities to take what money they wanted out? You know how they existed? They had logical and non-wasteful budgets. So if you can make it five years without doing this kind of stuff, then we should have been doing that all along. I just want, you know, how do, how do we make it five years? Do you have an explanation for that?
May I speak, please? Doug, your questions are valid. But this is not an inquisition? Thank you.
It's a budget meeting, I'm trying to see how we existed on budgets past.
I think you could ask the whole council this.
Okay, I'm not accusing anybody, I'm just asking a question, how did we exist five years without doing this to the citizens and causing the rates to rise? Five years, we didn't have this. Okay?
Thank you, Doug. Okay, I'm looking here at these other budget prep, this is in two, twenty-one, twenty-two. Spending. Okay, are there any other questions? I think we've probably seen some of these figures before, but we had the, on the front page, it says total shared cost and you're going to update this, correct, John, with the IT issues?
Yeah, I'll, I'll get the front page updated.
If you'll send that to all
Yeah, the remaining one should be the same.
Thank you.
But I'll get that to you.
All right, I appreciate that, I'm sure the council does. And the next page, it gives you an interpretation of how the money is shared and then the next page is, I think we've actually seen some of this before, haven't we? Finance Office Budget Prep, twenty-one to twenty-two.
You've probably seen something similar.
Very similar, yeah. Okay, any questions on any of this? Anybody on the left or the right? Anyone? Darryl, Mike?
Nope.
Seth?
It's clear.
Jeff? Moving on, man. Thank you. Okay, next, we have, I think we're going to talk about revenue, is that correct, John?
Correct.
I did have one question about electrical.
Yes, go ahead. I'm sorry, Seth. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
No, 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 you're fine. Go back.
The one thing, and I've talked to Mike about this and I've talked to Jeff about it, you know, as I see this, so we're going to pay six point two million dollars to purchase power and we're going to sell it, you know, all the costs that it comes with it, and it's going to cost us seven point three million dollars. You know, not getting into a rate discussion, but I can take my AEP bill, I can take my town bill, compare them, and I'm paying more in the town than I am paying with AEP. So, one thing that I would like, and I've told Mike, you know, when these guys were talking to me and thinking about, pointing me, I said, you know, the one thing that I really want to see, if I can make a change on anything while I'm here, this is what I want to see us do, is I want to reach out to AEP, I want to set up a meeting and have a discussion of, are they interested in purchasing our electrical system? Is that feasible? Is it viable? Is it possible? You know, Mike mentioned Bedford, some of these other, there's only like a handful, maybe five or six in the state of Virginia. The difference between rich lands and all of them is they have a power generation capability.
We buy ours.
You know, and we buy ours. So we're transmitting our power across AEP's lines, paying them to transfer the power, paying for the power, when AEP has the ability to service the rest of town. Now, I'm not saying that they can, or, I'm just saying, what I would ask council is, can we reach out to AEP? Before I was on council, I had a meeting on a project I'm working on with AEP, their economic development person was there, his name's Tracy Hurtig, and I spoke to her and she said, yes, we would be interested in discussing that. I was like, well, I'm not representing the council, this is before any of this ever happened.
Right, just your personal
This is me as a citizen, I was like, you know, I like to talk about this, this is possible. And so I would ask that maybe we could form a committee, reach out to AEP and have a conversation about it, because we are going to continue to do this every single year as we continue to go forward. The cost of power is going to increase, the cost for us to get it here, because we're not generating our own power. If we had a hydro dam out here and we were generating our power and selling it, it would be a lot cheaper than what it is and that, that's why some of these municipalities still have power companies, but nobody's doing it the way that we are. Now again, I don't know that we could, number one, I don't know that AEP would say, yeah, we'd like to buy it or we'd like to do it, but I think if you want to make a significant change, if there's something that we want to do on a significant level to change what we're doing, I think this is an opportunity that everybody then would be being billed on an equal playing field. People who live in In Valley or any of the other places that, that the town's annexed, the people who live in the old section of town or on the town's electric system. Everybody then's on the same playing field, the rate's cheaper than what we're paying now in town. And it's just an opportunity, if we can talk to them, sit down with them, number one, is this feasible? It may or may not be, I don't have an answer for that, I don't think anybody sitting at this table does, because we've never asked the question. But I would like us to do that.
I'll comment, thank you, Seth. Hold on, I've got to stand up, I've got a cramp, sorry. I'll comment on this. I think it certainly is a feasible discussion and it needs to be addressed, but I think we can form a committee when we have a meeting at the council and so it is under my understanding, it's my discretion on these things, but anyway, when we have a meeting at the council, not just a work session, which is what we are, we can appoint a committee at that time.
And I'm fine with that, I just want to mention it, we're talking about electrical system.
I'm not standing to be authoritative, I've got a terrible cramp, I have to stand up, please know that.
No, I just wanted to mention it because I feel like if what we're doing is, we're trying to prepare for the future, and I see that through the work that you guys have put into this and, and to try to make this thing viable as we go forward, you know, there are towns and it, you don't have to drive very far to look at towns who are just continuing to go down, you know? And I don't want to see that for rich lands. And if we can do something that makes a significant difference, the things that we're talking about tonight, they're very small, very minute, very small changes, but if you want to do something that could be possibly significant, then this is a conversation that we need to have.
I think that's plausible. And I would suggest at the next meeting of the council, where we have it on the agenda, we can, we can talk about this, we can form a committee, that's from the mayor's seat. Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Could I address it?
You may.
I'm, I'm with you on that. If the town can't manage better than it is, then we'll have no alternative but to do that. But I've studied the budget of the electric for years, on the average, it makes a million three every year to pay its expenses and to run, okay? If it was managed well and we didn't take money out of it, we could have cheaper rates than AEP and it could be used to draw industry and jobs and have cheaper rates for the businesses if it was ran right and managed right. But I assure you, if you take an average, the last few years I did, and it wakes, it makes way over a million dollars to pay the people that work the electric and to pay its expenses, so if we didn't take money out of it, it would be, it's God sent. But if you mismanage it like we are and punish the citizens, then we need to get rid of it.
Thank you, Doug. My comment, a closing comment on this particular topic. I think we have opportunities. We certainly don't want to mismanage and we're all a part of it and have been. And I think, there are all kinds of comments that were going to be this, that, and the other. I have a lot of confidence in this town and it's never where we want it to be, because we all have different visions, but it's where we are right now and I feel that we're on a positive path. I feel it and I certainly hope it, pray for it. And things always change, the pendulum always swings and that's just the nature of life. And as I pontificate at PLT, we have opportunities, thank you very much. Let's move on. Okay. So, are we ready to move on? Any other comments here, members of council? Or Heather, who's the director of finance, any of the comments? Manager?
Good.
Okay. We're going to revenue?
We are.
Thank you. Please place your sheets in front of you very quietly and pat them, you'll feel a lot better. Thank you.
This has a couple items in yellow that I hit earlier in the meeting, but I'll go back through and kind of reiterate. The first item is the two hundred thousand dollar pilot for electric that we have cut to keep our rates where they are. The last item is ARPA funding that we are allocating for employee salaries, therefore, you know, we can have a balanced budget with those additional funds used for that. The next item is the personal property tax. As I said, the county, based on their projections of assessed motor vehicle values, they project about a twenty-two percent increase across the county. To be on the safe side, I did a twenty percent increase. Originally, I started with no increase, hoping that, you know, we could have that as kind of a windfall for any unexpected costs that came up over the year, but with the changes at the last meeting, I felt that that was a fair increase based on projections. Next item is the cigarette tax increase to twenty-five percent. This is the same as what the county, what I've heard anticipates, saying theirs at. And then the last item is the six point seventy percent increase in garbage collection.
So John, thank you. John, going back up here to this projected increase for personal property, is that correct?
Yes.
We're talking roughly forty-five thousand dollars, basically, is that about right? Did I do that right?
Well, one twenty-nine minus one fifty-five, so about twenty-five thousand increase.
No, you're not talking about a change in the rate, you're just talking about a value change.
The value of vehicle increasing because of the current market.
I'm twenty-five, I don't know what I did, sorry, thank you. Didn't make sense, that's why I asked, thank you, sir. Seth, did you get your question answered?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay, and employee salaries and benefits, everybody good on that? ARPA funding allocation. Okay, projected twenty percent increase, that's the personal property. And the cigarette tax, we're looking at, I guess I got the wrong numbers, about
That should reach twenty-five percent, it reads two point five, that should
I follow that, I'll change it here. But I'm, the projected increase on cigarettes, if all this holds true, we, it's a projection, we're talking roughly fifty thousand dollars, forty thousand. Okay. Okay, and the next part that's highlighted in yellow for revenue is right in the middle. So I can follow, please? Garbage collections, okay? Current, okay. So the increase in garbage would, the projected and recommended difference is ten, roughly fifty, six thousand dollars, whatever, forty, forty-six thousand, let me get my eyes on here. Okay.
Forty-seven, two eighty.
Yeah, got it, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Questions on revenue, members of council?
That's wrong.
The cigarette tax, that is equal to the county, correct? Just confirm.
As far as I know.
Okay.
I don't know if they've approved theirs yet, but that is what they plan on approving
That's also seat above.
Yeah, you had the handout?
Yeah, that's what I'm, I just want to get, there's never
I think the only one around us that's lower is Bluefield, but it's because they're so close to West Virginia and they have a different cigarette tax, so they wanted to be lower to, you know, be competitive with, you know, what was across the state border, is what I believe that difference is compared to everybody else in our region.
Let's give everybody a minute to look at revenues before we turn the page.
As you, one comment. On those revenues, part of the revenues is to, there's seven hundred, over seven hundred and some thousand that's coming, that's transferred out of the utilities and moved over to other departments, if you look at it. It's black and white. If you look at electric fund payment, there's a hundred thousand, water and sewer is a hundred thousand.
Electric didn't have one.
Huh?
Electric didn't have one.
Oh, yeah, it does, it has, down here, there's five hundred and some thousand coming out from utilities, which includes that three seventy-five I've been talking about.
That was at the very bottom.
Yeah.
Up here you'd say there was a hundred thousand coming out of electric, but there's not.
It, it's a lieu of taxes, right here's a hundred thou-
No, not electric.
Not for like, only water and sewer.
Only water and sewer.
Okay, okay, there's two hundred, okay, down here Okay, down here is another 500 and some.
That's what we've been discussing for.
Okay, right. So there's 700 and some thousand that's taken out of utilities.
Yeah.
That's moved over. That's what I've been talking about, that, uh, you know, it's black and white. It's been taken out to use for other things. They call it shared expenses, but I call it other things.
Mayor, go ahead, Seth. On food tax, why did you guys decide that? Is there a reason we're going to collect less this year than we did last year?
What line number is that, Seth?
Uh.
Uh, 103701.
3701, second one down.
Yeah, I got it.
That's right.
It looks like you collected 836, but you only budgeted 790.
I couldn't hear what line number you were talking about.
3701, second line down, restaurant food tax. You just reduced the budget amount. I didn't know, was there something that, was there a reason why?
Yeah, I'm gonna go back to mine.
Because we actually have two.
I guess it's based on collections.
But we have two, well, but we have two new restaurants in town, too.
Can I comment briefly on that?
Just a minute, please. Let's let her look it up.
It'll be just a second.
Okay, go ahead.
While she's thinking, if you study what happens over the years, let's take, for example, the cigarette tax, Seth. The first year, they collect real good. You know, they get good, uh, you know, uh, proceeds or taxes. But if you notice, it starts going down because people get smart and they go to Cedar Bluff and so forth. So every time you add a tax, you, you do very well the first year. But if you study it, each year gets less and less. So what happens? You have to increase that tax to build it back up again. I studied that because we borders Cedar Bluff and Claypool Hill and we, we put a tax on something. All people do is, it takes them a while to get smart, but they'll go up there and save money. It helps them.
Heather, are you, have you found what you need yet?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
It just looks like your collections were 448 and then our budget was 790. And then the year before that, we collected 836. I'm just curious, I mean, maybe there's.
Well, the current actual is just for the first six months of the year.
Right.
So then they're basing that figure.
Right, you're doubling it, but it's not doubling. That's why I'm wondering, was there some reason why we were reducing it?
Yeah, it's not really doubled, is it?
No, it's a lot less. That's why I'm saying there might be, maybe there's some extra money there that we didn't. I just didn't know if there was a reason behind it, you know?
I don't know, Seth.
Did McDonald's close? You know, that would be the. You see what I'm talking about, John?
Yeah.
I see what you're talking about.
If I had to guess, it may just be a top one, it should have been 890. But we'll, we'll look at it and get a response after you all. Because worst case scenario, it's more money.
Right, that's why, I mean, I'm just looking through things that I can see that maybe, hey, we, we might have missed some money here or, you know, why did we do this?
Or, or does it collect where people pay at the next, you know, something weird with the.
Right.
When it's collected. Yeah, we'll look into that and I'll get everybody an update.
Thank you.
We're just waiting for the computer to, is it the wifi or just whatever?
No, it's not. It's connected, it's just.
That's all right, Heather.
It's just not.
It is, we have to wait till.
It's not doing anything.
Yeah.
It just keeps spinning.
We have that. Well, we'll go back to that, okay? And Heather, let us know when you, when that works for us, okay? So other questions here in revenue? Members of council? I'll note that. Okay.
I looked at, uh, one comment, I looked at Lebanon's budget and they're, they're collecting right about the same thing we are on real estate and all the other taxes to run their budget. If you look at them, pretty close. And they don't have utilities that they take out of. They run it on real estate tax and so forth, if you study each budget.
Personal property tax looks like, because there's 75 cents.
And the mills tax higher.
And the mills tax 1% higher, yeah.
I mean, we collect about the same amount if you look at their budget.
Our personal property tax was 21 cents per $100 and there's 75 cents.
I'm just saying that they run theirs off of real estate revenue and stuff like that. They don't take it out of their utilities and cause them the rates to skyrocket.
Okay, um, while we're waiting, um, for Heather to get the figures that have been requested, um, we'll just move on. Can we do that, council? So, uh, I'm on the next page, uh, general ledger budget report. Uh, this is the water fund and revenue, department revenue. So let's look here. John, any comments on this one? Uh, we're on this page.
The second one, no.
Okay. All right, so, uh, we are on revenue, interest income contract. Let me see. Big paper. Are these the same, John? No changes?
Yeah. Nothing, nothing major that I'm aware of. Pretty, should be pretty similar to what you've already received.
Okay.
I, I do like the idea of reassessing, um, just to take a look at where we are.
You're talking about mid, mid next year.
Yeah.
So we have about a year and a half because we started, the increase is late this year. So I think there's a chance we're going to be behind, but I'm hoping for the best.
Yeah, well, we did the same thing with GDS, right? I mean.
Where is it? Mike, I'm here, you're talking.
No, he mentioned, when he was going over it, he mentioned that, um, given the rate, the rate study that we have, that it's projecting us to go up, right? Well, he says he's going to reassess a year and a half from now.
Yes.
Pretty much like we did at the last meeting with electrical and see where we are and if that's what.
I follow what you're saying.
Still trending in that direction. I think that's a good idea, potential for saving there.
Are we on the sewer thing?
Uh, we are. I have just gotten into water fund. Shall we move on from water fund? All right, we're on, uh, the next page is sewer. All right, so, uh, we have sewer fund and department revenue. Any questions here?
On sewer collections.
Okay.
To 1.4 million, but you only collected 467 in that first.
For six months?
Yeah.
The third line down. The collections.
You're at current actual, um, is that what you're asking, Seth?
467?
You're probably getting more loud with the other ones than I did, Seth.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You can't quadruple it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You got a typo there.
That's one, yeah.
Yeah. Or no, no, that's what the extra rate. Is that what?
The extra rate's $5. So it's going to quadruple your revenue?
Yeah, can you check the number and make sure?
Oh, this is for six months.
Should be similar to the water.
So the, um, nine.
10864.
Yeah, the water didn't have that.
I don't think it quadrupled, what it said. Not quite double.
I mean, water only went up about.
It's a dollar.
10% or something.
I know sewer did go up significantly more than water because the cost of that, you know, the water plant upgrades is about $4 million. Waste water, I think it's about 15 or 16. So the, you know, amount of increase is going to be significantly more, but I'll, I'll look in that. I don't, I'll have to, you dig, do some digging to.
I think that's a.
Get a good explanation for that.
It's a legitimate question.
Yeah.
Uh, we're talking, Seth, make sure I'm following you, hopefully. I like current, your access 467. Is that what you're talking?
Yes.
To the right of that.
Then it goes to 1.
And then you go over to 1, 1645.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I follow that. I just took two times, I made 900 out of that and two, and just trying to figure out what you're saying. I've got it. It's more than double. Something more than double. Okay, any other questions here? I'll mark that. All right, any other questions? Let's move on to the next page then. On revenue, uh, we have, um, on revenue, we have the Fund 50, the electric fund. Okay, and we have, let's see. Uh, John, you have this highlighted. Would you like to go through that again?
Essentially, what we had in there was with the projections the GDS gave us last year, but with their updated projections, you know, I removed that increase for that line. So essentially, it's the same thing we budgeted last year.
Um, comments, questions here?
What did we lose last year?
In?
Electrical. Lost in electrical, yeah. Waste water.
It was close. I don't know, it was either just positive or just negative. Spent 6.7.
And we only run in 6.6.
Yep.
So we lost.
About 30 or 40.
About $30,000 in the hole.
Correct.
How much did you transfer out?
We only transferred out, no, that year we didn't transfer any out. We had our shared revenue, shared resources.
Um, well. No transfer.
I call shared resources, transfer out. You took out probably 600,000.
There's no transfer out.
It's lieu of, uh, it was right up on.
There was no payment lieu taxes.
It was up on this, I think 575.
Not for last year's actual. Not for last year's actual budget. There was no payment lieu taxes. The current budget is the only year we've ever had a payment lieu taxes.
Pardon?
The current budget year is the only one we've ever had a pilot or payment lieu taxes. Last year, we did not have one.
You, uh, on GS, if you go back in the minutes on there, it showed a $575,000 transfer out of the electric fund when GDS, uh, when we were going over it. Uh, I can, I'll, I can bring it.
It wasn't a pilot. I'm just, yeah. I don't know what you're referring to, but it wasn't a pilot.
You've always taken taxes out because, uh, Tim Taylor started that. He took, uh, as I told you, the history on it. He took 200 and some thousand dollars every year.
No, he didn't. No, he didn't.
Uh, just a minute, gentlemen.
I, I'd like to speak to that, Mayor, if I can.
Mike, you may speak.
So I done some research when you said that he's taken all kinds of money out for the past many years. So there's a Virginia audit, okay, that will show, and I will share it, that will show exactly how much money is taken out of the utility for each municipality, going all the back to 2013, 2014. It's a Virginia audit summary that will show exactly how much we've taken out of our utility and it shows zero. And that is the state of Virginia, that is by code.
The state of Virginia doesn't look at how much is transferred out.
I'll share, I'll share.
If you.
Show you.
All you got to do is look at the budget. It's black and white. Transfer out. I can bring the budgets and show you where it's transferred out. I don't care what you've got, I, I've got the budget.
Yeah, I'll share it.
Here's what I would suggest. Uh, Mayor, uh, Mike, what information you have? I would suggest you, uh, ask the manager to share it with all the members of council. And Doug, what information you have? Please share it with the manager, share it with all members of council. Is there anything else regarding, um, the electric fund?
Oh, no.
To my left, Daryl, Mike.
I'm good.
Seth, Doug, Jeff, John, anything you want to add to this? Heather? Okay. Um, John, I think, have we gone over our budget as, our manager, as you would wish us to do?
Yes, we have. And, uh, the two items, the items that have been brought up, where we're going to look, continue to look at the dispatch assessment, um, you know, for, we're going to leave it in this year's budget and then if, in the next couple of months, we realize that's the direction we want to go, you know, we can, you know, we'll wash out at the end of the year. The mills tax, we're going to look at that and see if that number should be adjusted. We're also going to look at the credit card processing number that's in there and see if that should be adjusted as well. And then we're going to look at the sewer revenue and see if that should be adjusted.
Okay.
And then you've, we'll, I'll let you all know what those, what we find on those three items. Um, but, you know, if it's possible, you know, is there consensus that everybody's good with everything else? And we'll update you all on that and then we'll be able to move forward with our original plan or.
Is there a consensus? Thank you, John. Uh, I hope everybody was catching all the things that John is going to research for us to clarify any, uh, numbers that we don't understand. Is council in consensus that this is the direction we're giving the manager? Uh, we can't vote. Is there a direction for the manager here? A consensus? Any other things we need to add?
I did get that pulled up.
Oh, go ahead, please, Heather.
I would as, I would assume that, um, to my knowledge, that, that is the projected amount, but, um, I can't think of any restaurants recently that's closed, but we, we do have some newer people that has came in. You know, one of the things, we used to have like the Bearded Moose and now that is actually full, you know, is projected based on the months before that. And we do have more people in the area, so, you know, definitely something that we could look into, but that was definitely wise because it wasn't. The, the ones I was looking at was def, were prior to those restaurants in pain.
Thank you very much, Heather. We appreciate what you're do, doing. Uh, I will simply ask consensus of council, everybody good? John, you know what to do. Uh, is there any other, um, budget business we need to take care of this evening? Okay. Then I have declaratory business. When I arrived at council this evening, I have a letter in front of me. It says, "Attention, Mayor Rod Curry," and I will read this. Uh, Mike Compton, 310 Kent Ridge Road, uh, Richlands, Virginia, um, 24641. Dated April 26th, 2022, Mr. John O'Daniel. Town manager, Town of Richlands, 200 Washington Square, Richlands, Virginia, 24641. Dear Town Manager, Council, and Mr. Mayor, I would like to thank each of you for giving me an opportunity to fill a vacant seat on the town council. Unfortunately, after much prayer and thoughtful discussions with my family and dear friends, I must decline the opportunity to serve at this time. As a lifelong resident and former store manager, it was my hope that I could use my own personal hardships to be a voice for the citizens of Richlands. I feel that unless you have walked a mile in someone's shoes, there is no possible way to fully understand what our citizens are experiencing at this time. I ask each of you to really reflect on what our citizens are enduring and what each of you can do to fulfill your promise as an elected official. The citizens of Richlands deserve a council that really puts the citizens' needs at the forefront of any decision-making process. All citizens of Richlands deserve a council that wants to ensure the growth of the community in all areas, not just the areas where there is a personal interest. Once again, I am thankful for this opportunity and I wish each of you the best of fulfilling your duties as an elected official. There are tough decisions to be made for Richlands to grow and prosper. Sincerely, Michael Compton. Mike Compton sign. I accept this as his official resignation from his appointed seat and I will ask that to be included in the minutes of this workshop. And based on that, I am going to call for a special meeting of the town council, a special call meeting. I would ask that we get their calendars out and ask, John, please, uh, tell us how many days we need to have, must have, to have a special meeting of the council.
Since you have everybody here, you could discuss this and make a decision tonight.
I've been told that, but I also was told with the, uh, Brad called me and told me that and that, uh, we had discussed it, I discussed it. And, um, even though we can do that, I, he says, he says, I also have the option to call a special meeting and that's what I prefer to do.
I believe 72 hours.
Sir? Sir?
72 hours.
All right, so let's look at our calendars, please, for next week. And so, here we go. Today is the 27th. We meet on the 10th. We could wait until the 10th or we can have a special called meeting. What is council's pleasure?
I only have one day available next week.
What is that, Mike?
It's going to be Tuesday.
Tuesday, the 3rd?
Yeah.
Is that adequate time, John?
Yeah, it would be.
All right. Other members of council? Are you available for the 3rd?
I can.
Seth, are you available for the 3rd? The evening of the 3rd? Doug, are you available for evening? It's a Tuesday. Jeff, are you available for evening of the 3rd?
Should be right now, yeah.
Make sure, everybody. Heather, you good with that?
I am, but I don't know if I have a clerk.
Okay, well, there will be specific things in this agenda, budget will not be included. So I will sign a notice to that. I will ask the clerk to prepare a brief statement from the mayor. I will sign it that we're having a special called meeting at the council at 6:00 PM on the 3rd of May in the Richlands Town Hall at 6:00 PM. And there are two things on that agenda and they are the appointment of a member of council and an appointment of a committee to work with AEP on possible issues. Thank you. That is on the agenda for the 3rd of May.